Everyone out today. And as we get started, our first line of business, we'll start with our invocation by Supervisor Ronnie Thompson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Nick Mitchell. All stand please.
Good to see you and everyone up here today. Heavenly Father, we come to you once again. We thank you, Lord, that you sent your son to die on the cross, that we can have life, have it more abundantly. We pray for the, our employee appreciations here today. We ask you richest blessings upon each and every one. Guide and direct, we thank you for them, for what they mean to our county. Now, we pray for the board, as we conduct the business of the county, that you'll give us wisdom and knowledge. Help each and every one, those that are not here. Guide and direct, if what we do will be pleasing to you, in Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, today, before we get started, I'd like to take this time to recognize our county employees for their service to the community. We ask that when we call your name, that you'll please come up to receive your service award. And as we call your name, I'll get you to come up here and I'd like for you to just form right around here, just everybody stay up. I want to, we want to get some pictures to commemorate this day. And before we give out these awards, I'd like to take this time just to say thank you to all of our county employees for your service. You're taking, in my opinion, we take for granted the service that you perform for the citizens of Franklin County. But it doesn't go unnoticed, and it doesn't go unappreciated. I will say this, and this is something that is hard to do, but you accomplish it every day. And in fact, you do your job and you make the seven of us actually look good. And that's a hard feat to accomplish, but you do it, and you do it amazingly well. And just thank you so much for the service that you do to our community. Before I start, before we start handing them out, I'm going to see if any other supervisors would like to comment. Anyone else like to share any comments in regard to ours?
Oh, well, Mr. Chair, I would just, again, like to echo some of what Chairman Tatum has said. You, the employees of the county, are the backbone of this organization. And you work tirelessly. Do not think it goes unnoticed, it does not. You work very hard, sometimes under very strenuous circumstances. And we are so proud to call each and every one of you our friends and our colleague here on the board. And I want you to know that we stand to support you, and we continue to try to do everything that we can to support you in a meaningful way as an employee. So I stand today with great gratitude and recognition of all your hard work and your dedication to the county and the citizens in Franklin County.
Thank you. Each and every one, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your years of service, appreciate all of you.
I won't belabor what everybody else said, but I'll tell you, my short term as a supervisor, I've seen a lot of problems other counties have financially and staff problems. We don't have those problems here in Franklin County, and it's because of you all, and I want to thank you.
Thank you all so much for everything you do, and every job is important to me, no one more so than the other, and I appreciate everything all of you do.
Okay, actually, how about I let you do that? And she's, she can pronounce these names, some of them better than I can. So I'm going to let her, when she calls your name out, if you will, just come on up here and receive your award.
In the forty-five years of service category, Kathy Thurman. In the thirty-five years of service category, Teresa Brown. In the twenty-five years of service category, Darryl Akers. And also Marcia Cramblett. And Chris Johnson. In the twenty years of service category, Linda Underwood. And Nikki Custer. Darryl Wimmer. And in fifteen years of service category, Tom Fireball. Stacy Jones. Paul Crandall. Jacob Chad. Melissa Kundif. The ten years of service category, Terry Dameron. Tony Mills. Sheriff Overton. Joanna Garst. Christina Love. Joshua Turner. Dwayne Amos. Dorothy Anderson. Julie Bowling. Bradley Osgood. Greg Tally. Jesse Ramsey. Louis Dooley. Leah Broho. And in the ten year category, not present, is David Hodges. And in the fifteen year category, not present, is also Ronnie Wilson. We move on to the five year category, Chad Houston. Diane Lee. Beth Ann Barnhart. Teresa Nestor. Ali Willoughby. Lisa Wilson. Kristen Shively. Cornell Goad. Brian Carter. Sac Zink. Jessica Davis. Angela Adams. Megan Fenner. And in our twenty years of service as a part-time employee, Bill Helms. As a part-time employee for first fifteen years of service, Curtis Robertson. In the part-time category for five years of service, Jeffrey Irvine. Sue Frith. Linda Robertson. And Jamie Forbes.
Again, thank you for your service to Franklin County. It is greatly appreciated, and certainly does not go unnoticed. This board, the work that we do, if it wasn't for you, it wouldn't matter what we do on that side of the bench. Just thank you for all that you do, and keep on going. And have a good day, and I just can't say thank you enough, but thank you.
Did you tell them they have to stay for the meeting? Come over here, Ronnie. Hi, you and Nick want to come over here?
Come on in here, tighten up.
Ain't nobody crackers.
Y'all should be getting like the-
We had like thirty to thirty-five years old.
I've got thirty-seven years.
Oh, my goodness.
Kathy was forty-five.
Something wrong with that picture, Ronnie?
Yes, I'm wrong with that picture. I don't know where my check and pen is.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I will, Mr. Chairman.
You're going to make the one change about the public safety work session, or we just won't talk about it when we go back?
Yeah.
To Calway?
Yeah.
I'd like for him to be here, so whatever.
Yeah, we'll take care of that when we go back, yeah. Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, do you need a roll call or a voice vote, be okay?
Voice vote would be sufficient.
All in favor of approving of the agenda, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Let the record show there are none opposed. Okay. The consent agenda, if any members have had any, have any questions or comments or anything in regard to consent agenda? If you have any questions, as always, I hope you've had a chance to speak to someone with staff, get those questions answered. But at this time, what you're, I do have an addition to the consent agenda. Chris just reminded me, on the approval of appropriations and the approval of February twenty-first, March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three Board of Supervisors meeting minutes, that is on the consent agenda. But I also would like to add the minutes for the following budget work sessions that we need to approve. January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, February the seventh, twenty-twenty-three, February the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, March the seventh, twenty-twenty-three, March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. I'd like to add those budget work session minutes to these, these other two meetings. Any other questions or comments in regard to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull number four, please.
Number four. Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, what's your pleasure in regard to the minutes of the meetings? And item one, two, three, five, and six. Okay, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve on those items. Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call, please?
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundif is absent for the vote. Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Thompson?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Okay, Supervisor Smith, you pulled item number four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to call special attention to a proclamation that the board will adopt as part of our agenda, being that May twenty-first through twenty-seventh is Emergency Medical Services Week. We have what will be an adopted proclamation. The theme for the twenty-twenty-three week is EMS, Where Emergency Care Begins. And I really think that sums up quite nicely. Our EMS staff, from top to bottom, we are so very fortunate and proud to have an EMS team in Franklin County that we all count on and can be very proud of. And so I didn't want the afternoon to pass without acknowledging them through this proclamation and letting them know how important they are to our lives. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, would you like to add that back to the consent agenda so that we can approve that?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to add item number four back to the consent agenda? All in favor? Let's see, do you need a roll call on that, since we did roll call on the rest of the consent agenda?
No, that item doesn't require a roll call.
Okay. All in favor that we approve item number four, let me know by saying aye.
Uh-uh.
All opposed, same sign. Let the record show there are none opposed. All right, moving right along, Mr. Daniels. Good to see you today.
Chairman, good to see you, members of the board, see you clearly without the plastic between us. Thank God, I had to ask Lisa Cooper when that was taken away, but recently, I understand, but that's great, so progress. And I'll say too, when we do our service awards periodically, we've got one coming up May thirty-first. I lost count, but when you look at that, those years of loyalty, is what that is, right? Not years of service. That's pretty magnificent when you get to do those events, so congratulations. As always, I'll run through my report and then take any questions or comments. So in the past thirty days, we've completed a couple pipes, some of which I mentioned last month. Five Mile Mountain, for example, we did not have it paved when I was with you last month. We've now got that paved, so that is pretty much complete. I'm not sure if that one had an edge line or center line on it, but that may be remaining. Dylan's Mill is complete, except for the paving, so that's still got a gravel surface. We'll come back and pave that with our hired equipment contractor within a few weeks. I don't have a set date, but that's coming. Moving on down to current and next sixty, got a couple additions that we didn't get on the report this month. For example, you've seen mowing on some of your primaries and even on our secondaries, two-twenty, Route forty and others. That mowing is ongoing. Some plant mix overlays where we're paving on various secondary routes, and we've got some primary work yet to happen as well. Slurry seal in some of our subdivisions and other places, that's actually complete for the calendar year, which is great, getting that early. And then we've got surface treatment going on, a chip seal. And we've got a handful of routes left to complete, and they'll finish that fairly soon, which, once again, is great because we're getting it early in the season, getting it out of the way, if you will, for the public. The Route forty, Franklin Street Pipe Replacement, just not too far down the road here, started last night. We got, had to do some waterline relocation or help the town, and all that took place. And we've got part of the structure set, the end wall on the inland end. But we likely won't be able to work tonight, just based on the forecast. So we'll pick that up tomorrow night, hopefully the weather holds out. We'll finish that within a few days, weather pending. Bethlehem Road, we actually had a pipe replacement scheduled for later in the month, or middle of this month. We juggled some stuff, and we actually completed that last week. So had to move a few things around because of the, we had a utility conflict on Route forty that we talked about. But everything's working out well. Page two, under land development, I wanted to highlight the USA Cycling Event that county staff and our staff is working together on over this upcoming June. I know there's several meetings that happen weekly in other periodic times, but we're partnering with the county, and I think VDM and others are in that as well. Traffic study request, not on here, but we had a request for a passing zone review. This will show up on next month's report, on six-sixteen Scruggs Road, basically from Baywood to Blue Water, the two state connections that were working between. And it may be the only passing zone on Scruggs, it's not many on Scruggs at all. So that's actually in our Salem shop for review. Moving on to project status, the only addition or one that I'll highlight, the last bullet, Route two-twenty, Route six-nineteen, Route eight-sixteen, that's a through-cut project and a smart scale project that was approved a few years back for the R-cut at Route six-nineteen Pleasant Hill. The Pleasant Hill part is not highlighted in your report, we're going to add that, so it'll be in there next month. But you'll see that's going to add later this year, December, we'll see work next year. And the Route two-twenty Works Road will also go to add at the same time, we'll see work early next year, so two good projects. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I had.
All right, you don't want to have anything? Go ahead, Tom.
Hey, Todd, we got a, I don't know if you guys can do anything about this or not. Got a public comments submission form before the meeting started. We get a lot of vehicles broke down northbound pulling out of Omni Source. And a lot of flat tires, a lot of people getting broke down pulling over. And this is the landowner that sent us this, they've got a lot of people that are pulling on their property when they have the flat tires. I understand they have the flat tires, but do you guys have anything in place where you guys can go and see if there's a lot of metal on the road? See if we can reach Omni Source and tell them to make sure their loads are a little bit more secure?
So we'll have a metal detector, but yes to the other parts of the question. We've interacted with county staff, Beth in particular, and we've had a couple meetings, and also some of the business owners in the field. Brian was out within the last two months, like that. We met again, and we've actually got a plan. So Omni Source, for a brief history, was built as part of industrial access in the nineties, give or take, I forget the exact year. The base, or some of the field, is a slag material from Ronald Electric Steel, if I remember correctly, which was economically, it was great, it was cheap. Long-term, it was not the best idea because it's, what's happening is it's oxidizing. And why that matters, I'll get to that in a second. The oxidation is creating waviness in the road, just undulations that are like, where is that coming from? So some of the trucks that are hauling to Omni Source or from whichever one, scrap metal, it's my understanding, is not required to be covered in the law, like other, you have to tarp stone and what have you on a dump truck. Some of that's coming off, maybe because of the road imperfections, who knows? I won't speculate further than that, but we believe that's what's causing the flat tires. So the solution is to mill and pave commerce again. And I say again because this will be the third time we've had to rectify it. Now, we had another option, which was remove the material, the slag, but that is a complete reconstruction of the road and would be significant impact on the businesses, and it'd be quite a dollar figure as well. We know that one day it will quit oxidizing, we just don't know when that day is. Hope's not a plan, but we are hoping a little bit that we have seen the life of the oxidation, and we're going to mill this off three inches, pave it back. If it has indeed quit oxidizing, we have solved the problem. If it hasn't, it will come back and we'll have to address it again.
So you think that's what's causing the metal to fall off on two-twenty?
Well, we do, the speed limit has been set at thirty-five, it was forty-five. We did a review and lowered the speed limit, but we don't, so Mr. Mitchell, I don't know for sure, but we speculate. And from some of the comments, there's debris on the road and just trying to put two and two together, honestly, where did it come? We think that's what it is. And I think Omni Source had talked about doing some sweeping, so they were owning some of it, I think. I don't want to speak for them, but we're going to get the road fixed. That'll be fairly soon in our new fiscal year, that we have that plan with our hired equipment contractor.
Yeah, I think this landowner, like when you pull out of Omni Source, go north on two-twenty, as you're going up the hill right there, they're on the right.
Oh, so now, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about commerce, you're on two-twenty when you're talking about the debris. Now, yeah, we're not going to solve that problem. That is, I shouldn't speculate, but if it's debris, it's falling off a truck, likely. Like I said, I don't, I'm not a law expert, but I don't think they're required to be tarped.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I had, appreciate everything. Thank you for what we talked about at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. Todd, just briefly, I want to thank you for the work on Route forty. I talked to a couple of those merchants, and they're hoping this will solve some of the flooding issues we've dealt with there in the past, but thank you for taking care of that.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? I do have just one thing, I had received a phone call last week on Nichols Creek Road, about maybe a half a mile off of Henry Road. There was some, a tree cutting service there trimming the brush back near one of the bridges, and they were cutting the trees down, limbing them up, and throwing them in the creek. And there's a low-water bridge about a quarter of a mile below there that was catching all that debris-
of a mile below there that was catching all that debris. And then what makes it through the bridge ends up in Philpott Lake. Could you please tell them when they're trimming the brush, chip it, whatever, but don't throw it in the creek?
We actually should be chipping it. And our folks actually haul it off sometimes because we partner with the landfill. But it was contractors, much as you know?
It was contractors. I think one of the neighbors said they thought they may have been out of Bedford or maybe Chatham or somewhere. It wasn't local, but it was a contractor.
Yeah, we have tree trimming contracts. We have tree removal contracts that work out of our roadside in Salem, but we'll check on it. And I don't know if this is the case here, sometimes there's other utilities that have contractors that we get caught up in, but we'll check on it.
All right. I appreciate it. All right. I didn't have anything else. If no one else has anything, thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
All right. Brian Carter.
All right. Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. So, for our monthly finance report, have a few items to update this month. And so, we're, our revenue expenditures through the end of April, so ten months of the fiscal year, what we're looking at. It's gonna be about eighty-three percent of the budget where we would expect. So, on the revenues that are monthly or periodic, we are meeting that threshold. And for expenditures, we're all at or below that threshold. So, from a overall general fund standpoint, we are within budget and our revenues are coming in as expected. So, just to graphically show that, you can see a little uptick in April, but for the most part, pretty consistent with what we would expect. And again, for, to break it down a little further on your categories, so your general property taxes again, so real estate bills have gone out. We will start collecting that revenue. That should catch up to prior year at this point over the next thirty, forty-five days. Other local taxes are pretty consistent and pretty really flat compared to last year when you look at it overall and the growth. And then we have a slight uptick from the state. Looks to be timing, nothing in particular on the revenue source. So, to break down a little further on real estate, not a lot of change since last month. Again, waiting for that uptick for the first half of our 2023 invoices, bills that have gone out. For personal property, we saw a little bit, a few more collections in the month of April. We're still about ten point nine percent year over year. That's about a million and a half growth year over year, which is good. We're still at ninety-seven, almost ninety-seven point five percent of budget. So, looking at that for what will come in in May and June and then all of the year-end adjustments that will need to be made, you know, we're probably going to miss budget unless we have a massive collection or a group of collections by anywhere in the two to three hundred thousand dollar range on that. I will say that that's more than made up by the increase in interest earnings on our deposits just because of the rapid increase from the Federal Reserve. So, not a concern in the overall general budget picture, but something, of course, we look at as we look at revenue projections and next year's budget and all those things. So, local sales tax, we are, I did see a good month. This would be two months behind, so this would be February sales that we were received from the state in April. That's because the state collects them and then they pass it along to the locality. So, there's a sixty-day delay typically. And so, we're still for about four hundred and thirty thousand up year over year, seven point five percent. That is an increase. We were at six point six percent last month year over year. So, we've went, we've almost went up at a percentage point in our year-over-year collection. So, that's good, strong growth. So, for meals tax, we're continuing to be fairly level. We're one point two million seventy-one thousand year over year. We're trending well as far as budget. We're at ninety-three percent with two months to go. So, we're ten percent above where we would want to be at that eighty-three percent mark. So, we're about six point three percent year over year. That's down a little bit. We were at six point five percent last month, but still overall, you can see the trend is still upward. So, we're doing positive. For transient occupancy, you can see we're still having strong collections in our occupancy tax. So, we're at forty-three point four percent year over year, about a hundred and ten thousand, well above where we budgeted. And that's an increase from last month. We were at forty-one point four percent last month, so about a two percentage point increase. So, still seeing strong collections on our occupancy tax. For expenditures, we can see the, we were up a little bit in April, however, we were down in March. So, it pretty much evens out. There's no real, no real change there other than the timing of more than likely check runs and payments. Breaking it down by categories, you can see we have some slight increases in most categories. That's to be expected. Doesn't seem to be anything driving that other than some general inflation, as you saw from the first one. We're still within budget and of course, our compensation as well, that will increase that year-over-year comparison. Similar thing, we're seeing month over month. Social services, our programs are a little bit down for them. CSA is still down. By the time we're done with it though, it probably will exceed what we had prior year. Just the complexity of the cases, the increase in cost, all those things are contributing. So, for fund balance and reserves, there really is no change to this information from what you received last month. We're still at the same number, looking at last year's audited number, no further commitments. We have an item on the agenda today for the school year-end surplus, but we have already accounted for that in prior months. So, that doesn't change the number regardless of what you dedicate because we always accounted for it anyway as part of their year rollover. Well, your decision today will not impact this bottom line number on the school carryover, I guess is my ultimate point. So, a couple other items, our capital project update. So, the school staff have submitted the hundred percent plans and specifications to VDOE and that is anticipated to be taken up at their June meeting for our middle school project. We have a very positive word that it will be approved. We do not know that though. It's kind of temporary that the way we understood it was that it's very, very high-ranking project. And so, that being the case, that'll be for the borrowing from the literary fund loan. That would be at that competitive three percent rate. And so, hopefully we'll find out something in June. Not sure it'll be in time for your June meeting, but we can certainly send you information update as we receive it. And the landfill borrowing is proceeding. We're hoping with our review with the rating agencies, I think those meetings went very well. Certainly, Mr. Whitlow and Ms. Smith can speak to that, but the, we should see those ratings in the next two weeks. And so, I think that'll be a very strong rating for us as we move forward with that landfill borrowing in the next couple of months. The anticipation is to close that by the end of June. And so, work, of course, is already ongoing, so cash flow-wise we'll be fine, but it, that's the process as we're moving forward with it. Okay. So, brief economic update, CPI, the inflation factor, the general inflation increased again four point nine percent in April. And so, that's down from what it has been, still high. The average, the benchmark for the Federal Reserve is in the two percent range. And so, still seeing inflation, still stubborn. So, they did increase at their May third meeting, the federal funds rate by a quarter of a percentage point again. And so, their next meeting is scheduled for the middle of June. The anticipation on that is that the rate hikes will more than likely subside for the rest of the calendar year, but there are no decreases planned short of any drastic change in the status of the economy. So, a couple of items, just to give you an update. You've received some of this information in various sources, but as far as the budget for twenty-four, next fiscal year, we still do not have an official state budget. Now, the state approves a budget, adopts a budget on a biennial basis. So, we do have the two-year budget. So, we do not have, we have no budget. We have a budget. But usually there are amendments in the in-between year, that second year. So, there are items on that that are pending. We're still waiting on that. The latest that we're hearing is the General Assembly will likely not reconvene until late June, which puts a real pressure on us as localities and school systems to try and manage our budgets. Unsure of what the state revenue picture will look like. So, we're continuing as staff to monitor that. At this point, we do not see anything that is a major concern to us that would drastically impact the budget that this board adopted at the April sixth meeting. So, but one of the things that is a concern as part of that holdup is that seven percent cost of living increase. So, what is approved in the budget now is a five percent. We feel confident there is a version of a seven percent in both the House and Senate versions of a bill in the General Assembly. So, we feel confident something will get passed along those lines. So, that is why it was in the proposed budget that this board adopted. However, should that not come through, that would leave a two percent gap that we as staff would have to look at. How do we cover that? Come back to the board for any possible budget amendments if we do not receive that state money, mainly for constitutional offices, social services. That's what's built in for us. If there is significant drop in state funding especially, that may necessitate another budget amendment. If it's a drop, not necessarily a public hearing, anything like that, but it would be something we would bring back and look at that. From what we've seen, typically the state has been holding harmless on the ADM, but I think there was some discussion of, you know, that error at the state level of how that gets funded. And so, from what I understand, all of that right now is stable, but we will certainly monitor that situation. The other thing that could put pressure on the 2024 budget is the SAFRA grant. So, we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars in the adopted budget for, from the SAFRA grant for operations, for EMS, Fire EMS coverage. So, should we not receive that SAFRA grant, we would have to find two hundred thousand dollars in the existing budget, cut it from somewhere, find another revenue stream, however we would look to do that. And we did, I know we have a work session later, but we did receive a preliminary award notification on the School Resource Officer Grant for the additional eight. That was new. We also received on the additional, the six and the two that are continuation grants. So, while we have no official formal award, it's a very informal notice. So, the numbers could change. We don't have that information at this point, but want to be aware that there is a local commitment to that should we accept that grant award. So, that was not budgeted. So, all of these items are possible pressures on that 2024 budget before we even get by first. So, just wanted to kind of give the board a little bit of a layout of what we're looking at right now, early on for next fiscal year's budget. And so, a couple of updates. Last month, it was requested to bring back some information on meals and cigarette tax. And so, a lot of this you've seen. We've tweaked it. We also were requested to bring back what other localities are doing, if my notes are correct. And so, we gathered that information. So, just for meals tax first, based on the Virginia Code section there, fifty-eight point one dash thirty-eight thirty-three, that was amended by the General Assembly two years ago now, I believe, to allow counties specifically to increase their meals tax from four percent to six percent. Towns and cities have a lot broader authority on that. So, that legislation change was specific to counties. So, the county currently assesses a four percent. The town just recently approved, they had five percent. They recently approved an increase to six percent. So, an additional two percent on meals would generate about seven hundred thousand dollars. That's our projected amount annual basis on the budget. And just to show you what other localities do, so we have a couple of charts. We do the county at the top, which is really probably the comparable group. You can see most counties are still at four percent. You can see some in Halifax, Henry, Pennsylvania and with counties have approved an increase to six percent. The towns and cities, because they do not have that six percent cap, again, they have broader discretion. You see a little bit of more of a variety. So, the town is at the six percent. You see that in the yellow bar in the middle. And you can see that the variety, Town of Bedford is at five and a half percent, Floyd's at five percent, City of Danville's at six and a half, so is Lynchburg, Martinsville's at seven percent and such. So, we're four percent, we're comparable with counties. We have some of our neighbors that have gone to six. With towns, we're also comparable, a little below, but that's really to be expected. Towns typically are higher than counties mainly because of the state, the state code and the allowance. So, for cigarette tax, similar thing in the same General Assembly session, I believe, they approved the ability for localities, counties to assess a cigarette tax. And so, the biggest thing on that to implement is that they require a stamp. And so, there's a coordination of the stamp. And so, vendors come and purchase the stamp from the county and then they affix that stamp onto each pack of cigarettes. And so, that's basically how that process works. The tax allowed based on the Code section is up to two cents per cigarette or forty cents per pack is the way the Code section reads. And so, that is cigarette-specific. That is not vaping. That is a state tax that is not in this Code section. That would not be allowable for local taxation. It really doesn't apply to any other forms of tobacco. It is a specific cigarette tax based on the Code section. It is very difficult to estimate new revenue on this simply because we do not have a basis of stores in the county to really understand where we might collect that. The other thing that is difficult is that if you, depending on a tax adopted, there are localities around us, some have it, some do not, including our inner towns. And so, it's difficult for us to estimate the revenue loss that may occur if somebody would want to drive across the border to another locality that may not have a cigarette tax rather than pay it in Franklin County if we enacted one. So, but all of those variables being said, I know you as the board would want to look at something. So, we're looking at possibly a forty cent tax, and that's just the max. We're not recommending, I want to be clear, we're not recommending. We went to the max for the sake of what the Code section allows. That possibly would generate about three hundred thousand dollars in new revenue. Because it's so difficult to estimate, we're not recommending any real use in recurring operating expenses till we have a better picture of what that revenue looks like or any significant commitments. I think to me, that's probably the most fiscally prudent, but certainly not something out of the realm should the board want to have a discussion. It is typically a declining tax revenue. Basically, social trends are less and less are smoking. So, that would be some options that we would look at. Now, anything in the implementation of the tax would be reduced by the cost of things like the stamps and some of those just administrative items that would have to come out of that in order. So, that's a gross number. That's not the net number. There would be a cost to that to implement. So, as far as polling the localities, in addition to the tax rate, we asked a few extra questions. We received responses from fourteen of them. We asked if they hired additional staff to implement. The follow-up was gonna be, okay, what did you need them for? But really, no locality had hired additional employees to manage the implementation or collection that responded to us, just on our sample. It's certainly not a statistical sample. It was just who responded. And so, most counties, on the county side, have the treasurer manage it, ordering and maintaining stamp distribution. And I think a lot of that has to do with two things. The treasurer has the vault where they would need to be stored securely and then they have a point of sale with a cash register. I don't know that there's any basic reason other than that, other than the treasurer typically collects the money. And the Commissioner Revenue enforces compliance. I would say on these that if there's indication of the board that we want to research further, then that would need to be a collaborative conversation with the Treasurer and Commissioner Revenue on how we move forward with this because there is something where they would be involved in on a cigarette tax. Meals tax is already done. That's collected as it is and the Commissioner already does that. But I would want to mention that to say that we as staff, you know, a couple of years ago had general conversations, but we certainly, in my opinion, would want to make sure they weigh in on any possibilities that maybe we have overlooked. So, for cigarette tax, the rates, this gives you a little bit of an idea for those around us that collect them. So, Patrick County is at ten cents, so is Town of Stewart. Town of Rocky Mountain is at ten cents per pack. These are the per pack rates. And so, Runup County, Town of Benton have a twenty-five cent. Martinsville, Bedford, Town of Bedford have a thirty cent. City of Lynchburg, thirty-five. And Montgomery County just approved a forty cent per pack cigarette tax. So, that will become effective this fiscal year for them. Yes?
I'm gonna ask you a question there. Like Roanoke County and the Town of Benton. Benton's in Roanoke County, does each one of them have twenty-five cents or is it just one or?
It's just one. And so, the way the Code section reads as a county, the county collects the cigarette tax unless the town has a cigarette tax enacted. So, in that case, you either pay the town or the county. You do not pay both.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And so, with that, that's the general overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions or write down any follow-ups should you have anything.
All right. Anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
For the cigarette tax, I'm pretty sure our Commissioner said she doesn't have the personnel to even consider implementing the cigarette tax. We didn't give her any extra people in this upcoming fiscal year, correct? We didn't give her any extra people in this upcoming fiscal year, correct? So I appreciate you presenting it, but I mean, it's irrelevant to me if she doesn't have the staff to implement it. And she's said it several times, I'm pretty sure.
She has. And so that, that's why we asked the question of other localities as well. It's, it's as best we can do on the information. Really, most of the work, other than if you want to really get into compliance, is probably going to be on the treasurer's side for the stamp ordering. I don't know that there's a lot of forms that need to be done, but that, that's that conversation I was mentioning about additional follow-up if we wanted to move further. There needs to be a conversation on that, yes, sir.
Thank you, just want to remind everybody what Margaret said.
She did, you're right.
May I ask a question? Brian, getting back to your reports.
Yes, ma'am.
I can't recall and I don't have it in front of me. Did the school's budget held harmless on ADM for '24?
Yes, that's my recollection. I'm going to bear my shoulder, see the head nod, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Carter? Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
All right, moving right along, Dr. Cobb.
Mr. Terry will be presenting for us today.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, board.
Good afternoon.
Well, Mr. Carter has been presenting the 2.3 million dollar carryover for FY '22 now for several months. And finally coming to you to try to provide you some options and at least a school board's recommendation on how we want to allocate those funds. So the total for the last year was 2,314,234. The school board at its last meeting approved the recommendations to come to this board to, to utilize these funds as follow. Follows a total of 1,49,341 of surplus federal funds to be appropriated to the beginning fund balance for the new school nutrition fund, which will be effective July 1 of 2023. And then the remaining balance of 1,264,892 be applied to the beginning fund balance for a new health and dental fund that is currently under construction by our consultant, but is also slated for a July 1, 2023 implementation date. So the school nutrition program fund, briefly give a little his, history of that. Reimbursements during the pandemic were through the summer feeding program, not necessarily the national school lunch program. And this provided much needed additional revenue for the program to really navigate all of the various challenges that occurred during the pandemic. In 2023, we became a community eligibility provision school division, which means that all students in all schools are provided free breakfast and lunches. So at, right now, the financial report card for that program is, we're currently operating at about a break even level for that. And the reason for that is, of course, as you know, inflationary problems with the food cost has also impacted the school lunch program. And it's, it's been a significant cost multiplier for us this year. And so the carryover of 1,49,000 then is requested to be appropriated to this new fund to start as a beginning fund balance for that fund effective July 1 of 2023. The next slide basically gives you the breakdown of all the various revenue accounts for the school lunch program for last year and how that shook, shook out as far as the revenue and expenditures are concerned. And ultimately then the surplus of 1,49,341 to be allocated to that fund effective July 1. So the proposed health plan carryover appropriation, that represents the remainder of the 2.3 million. The IBNR amount from last year from our consultants and auditors was at 309,000. So the school board policy basically states that a minimum reserve will be established to adequately cover two months of total plan operating costs for both plans, both the health and the dental plan and the IBNR estimate. So this IBNR estimate is updated annually and the dollar amount of it is adjusted annually after each plan year. And IBNR stands for incurred but not reported. It is basically as we stand here today, claims that we know are happening, but have not been put into the system and carried forward. So that's really an insurance term and it's used widely to estimate future claims. Our insurance consultants estimated the medical plan reserve at 8% of claims. And basically as I walk through each one of these bullets, it's a step-by-step process on how the total reserve has been calculated. But 8% of medical claims in that bullet for a total of $619,000. And then they estimated the dental plan reserve at 7% of claims for a total of 26,911. And then when you add the two months' planned expenses to the dental plan, it provides a recommended reserve for that dental plan of $90,000 and the recommended reserve for the medical plan of approximately 1.8. So when you add the two together, including dental, the recommended reserve by our insurance consultants is 1,916,167. And they want to stress that these are conservative estimates, of course, but it's very typical of what their public sector clients use for these type of reserve balances. So when you look at the carryover addition of 1.2 million to, and you add that to the current reserve amount of 309,000, that gives a total balance of 1,574,605. So the current dental reserve held currently now by Delta Dental is 54,658. So it brings the total to 1,629,263, which is 277,900 less than that target reserve. So the current plan results through March, and I'm happy to report that we're having a much better year than last year. The current surplus is 752,276. So that yields total plan assets at 2,381, which is a total of 465,000 above the target reserve. I will stress that these results are not final. We still have three months left in the remainder of the year because these are really through, we haven't received April results, yes, these are through March. So it will, it will deviate, hopefully we, we hope it will deviate up, but as we know, there's no guarantees that this will happen. So that's really the extent of how that calc, that was calculated. Fund balance then would obviously, as results come in, would continue hopefully to grow and continue to grow this for any future negative years we may have in settlement of claims. But currently, right now, the plan is operating at a, as a positive result and we certainly try to keep our rates and, and estimate claims accurately going forward. So this, really the recommendations that the school board has for these funds, be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
All right, anyone have any questions for Mr. Terry?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Terry, thank you for this overview.
Yes, ma'am.
I just need some clarification. On the executive summary that we have, it talks about in the second paragraph, the schools will need an additional $651,274 to fully fund the reserve requirement. Where does that fall into all of this?
I'm not aware of that 651 figure.
I can't make the numbers work.
Yeah.
It's the difference between what's left out of your 2.3 million from the 1.9.
I got you, okay, okay, all right. Did you hear that, Ms. Smith?
Say that again, sir, if you don't mind. Want to make sure I'm understanding.
Sorry, Ms. Smith, speaking from the corner. So the 651,000 is the difference between the 1.9 million that needs to be in the reserve and what is left out of the 2.3 million total. So if you notice, they, out of the 2.3 million carryover, they're asking for 1,49,000 to be to the, the food nutrition program. So what's left is the 1,264. So we do not have enough to get to that 1.9 million. We would need about another 651,000. And I believe, Mr. Terry, you expect that to happen this year?
I do expect that, but we won't receive that until after the plan year of June 30.
All right, so I'm going to ask a silly question, so forgive me. So if you've got a surplus in federal funds for the nutrition program, I don't, can you? It might be restricted monies probably, I'm probably answering my own questions.
It is restricted money.
Okay, then I don't have the question. I get it, thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead, Ron. Mr. Terry, who's the consulting firm for the healthcare plan?
S. McGriff Insurance Consultants.
How long have they been there?
Since 2016.
Were they in place when, was it two, three years ago? When the superintendent came before the board asking for all that money back?
Yes, sir.
To be given to the employees?
Yes, sir, they were actually the ones that helped us start the plan.
I'm, I don't have any problem with this nu, nutrition program at all. But I do have heartburn with giving money back and then turning around now wanting, wanting to keep money, taxpayers' dollars, to put back into this health plan when you gave money away a couple of years ago. Can you explain that?
Well, we are really required to carry that reserve, sir, because the plan participants, it is expected to protect their interest should the plan dissolve, to make sure that all claims can be settled after that dissolution for the next, typically for 12 months, because that's the IBNR window that is opened. So that's really for their plan protection and it would be really, our consultants asked us to do that by policy. So that is what was requested of us to do.
I understand that. How, how, how was that money given back to, because you're, the school board is the one that wanted to be self-insured?
Right.
And then they turn around and give money away one year back and then they come and want tax dollars to keep it going another year. Can you explain that?
Well, I, I would remind everyone that of those premium dollars that are returned, about 28% of those are employee dollars. So, yeah.
Are these not employee dollars here?
Well, yes, but they are going into reserve for the health fund.
Why didn't it go in there before?
That should have happened in prior years, yes, sir. But Mr. Carter, I mean, do you want to help explain some of the accounting processes that went on there?
Yes, sir, so I, I think what Mr. Terry is right. So what really we probably should have done at the beginning of this was set up a reserve fund initially. And I think probably some of that, what has happened essentially is the savings that occurred in the plan over the years were absorbed into operations. So we never built that reserve fully. And that's just on the, the staff as far as communication on what, what some of these funds were intended for. So the normal operation of the fund, and Mr. Terry's right, there'd be a combination of school employer dollars and employee dollars that would fund it. So there is going to be some percentage that has been absorbed. So what has happened in prior years, it's been absorbed into operations and so any carryover has been pulled to capital instead of being put aside in a reserve. So this is just trying to correct that and get it back. So what the schools are doing or requesting is they're just going to forego capital dollars this year, even though there are needs, but they want to go ahead and restore that fund balance to try and correct that. And we will have a new fund set up with, for this specific reserve going forward so that this doesn't happen again. So, but it was a lot in the, up the beginning years of this implementation on some things we probably should have clarified and set up that reserve early on.
So this is trying to fix a problem that's been ongoing. So now that money's gone, taxpayers have got to put back into it.
So this would be, at least a portion of it would be the surplus funds from the schools that would be provided to them by the board, which would be the taxpayers, yes, sir.
Mr. Carter, did they ever answer your question, what happened to all that money?
We should not have been strong-armed into giving that money away to begin with. And.
And now we're trying to be strong-arming back and putting it back.
And I'm not, certainly not blaming Dr. Cobb's or Mr. Terry, but it, it leaves a real bad taste in my mouth here moving forward. And I think we're going to have to correct this problem, but I don't especially like it. Ron. Yeah, different superintendent, so all I have to say is, been sitting here for three and a half years. I want to thank you for everything you've done, coming in here and explaining stuff, does Mr. Terry. I think you're exceptional at your job and I thank you for coming in here and always giving this board a really good overview of a school's finances. I think you do a fantastic job. And if we've got a good plan in place moving forward, and it sounds like we do, I wholeheartedly support this 100%. And I appreciate you sticking in there with schools and Dr. Cobb's and appreciate everything you guys do. It's always very informative. And if we've got a good plan moving forward, let's stick to it and I support whatever you guys want to do today.
Amen, Mr. Chair. Gentlemen, the way that, simplistically that I see this is, this was a decision made. Budgets are fluid documents, allocations of revenue are fluid. This was a prior administration superintendent primarily making decisions on where to put money at budget time. And unfortunately, the reserve that's required was not done and the money was shifted to capital. Now, that's not Mr. Terry's fault, it's not Dr. Cobb's fault. So there's really no use in pointing fingers at who did it. I think the news that we are dealing with today is the fact that that acknowledgement is in place and that there's going to be an appropriate amount of money contained in a reserve because you all are self-insured. And that is good fiduciary management of a self-insured entity. So what happened, happened. We're not going to be able to go back and, and judge how that was, why, what for. But what we know today is that we are correcting that and moving forward, there will be the acknowledgement of that required amount of money in that reserve. Do I get that correct? Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen.
Yes. I do not argue the fact that they're not trying to rectify a problem. I do not argue that. And I'm not pointing fingers at nobody. But I am saying, and will continue to say, that this is a common, everyday factor with the school board. It's always something. It's always something there. And when are they going to fix that? That's what my point is. Ever since I've been on the Board of Supervisors, it's always something like this. And then they come back and want to fix it. You got to quit doing this. That's what my point is.
Anyone else? If not, thank you, Mr. Terry.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Thank you.
We need to take action in regard to the carryovers for the school board, which is a pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion for the board's consideration.
Okay, go ahead.
I would make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve the school's carryover request as presented in this summary.
Got it. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve.
Question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is both of this the dental with the nutrition fund and with the health and welfare? Are these together? I'd like to see them separated.
Okay.
I think they are.
They, they, both of those are included as one in, in this motion, correct?
That was the way the summary was presented.
Right.
So do you want the motion separated or you're talking about the reserve funds?
I, I will support the nutrition.
Okay.
Will not support the health and welfare.
Then maybe we need to break it out.
Okay.
If we separate.
Superintendent Smith, would you like to amend your motion?
I will amend my motion, Mr. Chairman, to that of approving the school's carryover appropriation requests in the amount of, let's see here. If I get the right amount here, 1,49,341.08. Do I have that right number, Dr. Cobb's? That's my motion, amended motion.
And that is for the?
That is for the school nutrition program.
And we have a second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the carryovers for the nutrition program for the school division. Madam Clerk, you take a roll call, please.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Cundev is absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Okay, now the other part of that motion would you like to?
Can I ask a question? If we make this second.
If, uh, we make this second motion and it fails, what occurs with the carryover money for that part of it?
Mrs. Carter?
Uh, at this point, the carryover money is sitting as part of the county's fund balance. And so it would just remain there until subject to future board appropriation.
Okay, go towards the, uh, school resource officers.
Okay.
I, I would, I would just add, um, Mr. Chair members of the board, if I may, I, Mr. Carter, this one-time dollars in terms of the carryover, it's not ongoing.
That's right. That's correct.
Uh, and then the other caveat too is if there were, uh, significant claims year in, in, in terms of, um. Any liabilities with the current school pension plan is, is just one other item of consideration.
There'd be that and then there, there is a portion of that number that probably is, well, is employee, school employee contribution. So we probably want to break that out a- as part of that because they lumped together as far as the plan. But both employer and employee contribute to that. I don't know what that number is.
Want me to offer a motion?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I would make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve the school's carryover request. For its health and dental fund reserve, uh, in the amount of one million, two hundred sixty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the carryover request for the health and dental reserve for the school board. There are no comments. Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ron, Ron, I'm sorry, Ronnie Thompson?
No.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundev is absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good afternoon. Nice to see everyone with us this afternoon. I see our sheriff is with us, a school superintendent and school finance director and, uh. Mr. Tatum, I went into a meeting we held just two weeks ago on, on this very topic and of course, we thought it would be really good to, to start off the day, maybe. Kind of setting the stage of where we are with school resource officers, where we were, where we are currently and maybe, um, possibility of maybe where we possibly will go. So, um, Brian, if you don't mind advancing the slide for me there. So, uh, you'll see on the screen prior, um, uh, to. Really, this, this current, um, school budget year or the school year prior to the current school year. Uh, there was a total of two, uh, SROs from the Rocky Mount Police Department. One's at the middle school, one at the high school. Of course, in the sheriff's office, uh, an additional three, uh, one at the middle and two at the high school. So combined with the town and the county, prior to the current school year, there were two SROs at the middle school and three at the high school. None in the elementary schools prior to this school year. And of course, you all remember as a board, last summer, this board deliberated and worked with the office of the sheriff. Where the sheriff applied for a state school resource officer grant and was awarded to support six. New additional school resource officers for shared coverage of our twelve elementary schools. That's a total of eleven school resource officers in the school system. Nine of which are on the county, uh, portion, two of which are on the town of Rocky Mount portion. Of course, previous and current, um, school resource officer state grants, they are subject to a continuation of state funding. So it is subject to the annual budget appropriation of the Commonwealth of Virginia each year. Ultimately, the caveat and with, with school resource officer grants, uh, they expire. They ultimately expire, they ultimately, um, decrease over a period of years. As an example, the recent grant for the additional six SROs will expire in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. You may have, uh, heard me refer to this and it's not unlike some of the federal grants that often expire. I, I, I equate it to, um, the state of Virginia. While we welcome the ice cream cone with the ice cream. We know that ice cream cone melts and will melt in a matter of four or five years, leaving the locality with the full cost. Potentially, if the locality so chooses, to continue with SROs. During the March seventh board meeting, our board acknowledged the sheriff's request and his plan to, uh, apply for an additional eight SROs, uh, currently. Uh, the board did acknowledge during that, and I think it was understood by all, that, uh, the application process would move forward. However, the county is not bound to accept the state grant funding and the subsequent required local match going forward. We're not bound by that if we are awarded, uh, the SRO grant. Roll forward to the April sixth board meeting, the board at that meeting voted to allocate up to a hundred thousand dollars. Of one-time funding from the county's budget stabilization reserve to assist with SRO coverage in our schools for the remaining part of the school year. The sheriff's office recently advised us, I think this was ask of staff, what's the accounting, where are we with that one hundred thousand? Uh, the sheriff's office has advised, they put a plan in place utilizing existing staffing to handle, uh, the last remaining weeks of school, this school year. Uh, the sheriff's office also advises that it has used limited overtime to date, uh, using existing overtime line items to handle this budget year. Therefore, um, the sheriff's office has advised, it does not appear that they will need to utilize the one hundred thousand dollars recently approved by the board. That being said, during the April sixth board meeting, the board also directed staff to examine various school resource officer call scenarios. To really begin this review and discussion. And Mr. Tatum, as you noted, prior, uh, on May second, uh, our board chairman and our vice chair convened a meeting with the chair and the vice chair of the school board. The school staff, the sheriff's office, sheriff's staff, the town and county town staff, representatives. Really to begin this collaborative discussion of funding opportunities. And so where are we? As Mr. Carter noted during his finance budget presentation, we do understand there's been preliminary notification, uh, of an award. Uh, for SRO grants for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Uh, that would support the equivalent of eight new school resource officers or state funding of approximately four hundred sixty-two thousand. With that forty percent local match requirement of three hundred and six thousand. It is important to note that none of these funds are budgeted at this time in terms of county funds. The board has already approved the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. I also should note that, um, no startup or capital cost such as vehicles, uniforms, or equipment, that's an estimated cost there for these. Potential eight SROs, none of that has been budgeted at this time. And so, as previously noted, all this grant funding from the state that does incrementally decrease and expires in four or five years. The current grant that we have for those six SROs will expire in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And this newly announced SRO grant, if accepted, uh, those funds would expire in FY twenty-six, twenty-seven. So if there's any acceptance or modification to the SRO grant that we have just been advised of. Uh, action would need to be taken to accept that or modify that within sixty days of the grant award letter, the official grant award letter. Of course, we don't know that date because we haven't received a dated official letter, but it's sixty days, um, further into that. So, all this being said, uh, a couple of weeks ago, in anticipation possibly of being awarded a state SRO grant. We really needed to see the numbers on paper. What does that look like in terms of the cost? Because there are several rounds of SRO grants that, that are funding through. The, the, the previous two, which, which has been continued, the, the six, which are certainly, uh, ongoing. And then now the potential, uh, of additional eight. So in totality, if the previous, the current six and the future eight SROs, um, if that goes forward. By twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we are seeing an ongoing operational cost of two million dollars annually. And whatever that may look like, um, of course, that is, uh, does have, uh, some COLAs and so forth built in. That Mr. Carter has built into the spreadsheet and I'm going to share those scenarios with you and, and Brian, Mr. Carter can, can walk the board, uh, through some of these costs. I should also say in this, over a five-year period, potentially of a billion dollars, potentially on capital for equipment, vehicles and so forth. Because there is a five-year typically, uh, typical replacement cost for vehicles. However, that's not to say that, you know, that has to occur. Meaning, um, we know SROs have a different function than law enforcement patrol deputies. Patrol deputies likely need, uh, and the sheriff and, and, and the major certainly can speak to this better than I can. Likely need greater capacity, if you will, in terms of a patrol vehicle and not necessarily just a, a vehicle, if you will. We did have some conversation in recent weeks. I should say this is not, uh, just unique to Franklin County. I think localities around the Commonwealth are having this conversation, uh, in terms of school security and school resource officer coverage. I had a conversation with the county administrator in Henry County most recently. Where Henry County, uh, devised a plan, if you will, working with their school system and their school system. Um, utilizing vacancy savings within their school system to provide school resource officer coverage the remainder of this school year. And then also looking at next year with vacancy savings, utilizing and partnering with the office of the sheriff in Henry County. Um, retired deputies, if you will, on a part-time basis. And not necessarily the full-time basis where they're actually increasing full-time staff. Going the route of can we do this, can that locality do that, do this, utilizing part-time retired deputies? And that, that's just one, um, possibility, uh, or, or, or action step that another locality has taken. And so where are we in terms of, uh, the conversation? We did have this conversation two weeks ago, as I said, with, um, with this, uh, group with representatives from the schools, the sheriff. And included in that was the town of Rocky Mount. And we reviewed a, um, a, a set of scenarios, call scenarios, what that would look like, uh, look like of, uh, eight full-time SROs. If, if, if we go that route of an additional eight full-time, what would it look like of four, uh, full-time, four part-time? Or what if we go the route of all eight, um, SROs as part-time? And modifying the grant application, and we do understand that can be done at the state level, it can be provided part-time. They have to be all for, uh, law enforcement, but it can be done, uh, and so forth. So with that being said, Mr. Carter, I may get you to, uh, advance the slide again. I believe we're at the point of looking at some of these, um, scenarios and I'm gonna, um, we'll. Ask maybe some of the staff to pass these around to the board. Uh, and we have shared, this should not be new to the board. We had shared, shared this information with the board a couple of weeks ago following the meeting, uh, that we had. Really thinking through, uh, a collaborative, if you will, uh, approach, uh, to possibly tackling the funding. Uh, of school resource officers. Uh, again, these are scenarios. You can see scenario one, um, that has eight full-time, uh, SROs. Scenario one, I should say, an important caveat here with scenario one, scenario one includes capital. It includes, um, uh, a certain amount, five hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. If patrol vehicles and so forth were procured and so forth, for, for eight full-time. Uh, both in twenty-twenty-four, but then also replacement capital in twenty-twenty-nine. In scenarios two and scenarios three, in the four, 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 full-time, four, part-time. And the eight, all part-time, there is no capital built in, uh, to those. With perhaps the assumption, and we have had a conversation, uh, with the sheriff's office. The possibility of asset forfeiture dollars, um, possibly being able to contribute to capital. For perhaps a lesser amount of capital that could cover, if you will, provide a vehicle, if you will. For some of these school resource officers to be placed at the schools. If that's a possibility and/or looking at the sheriff's department fleet, full well knowing. That a fleet of SRO vehicles are, um, I guess accumulating far less miles, a minimal miles than a patrol vehicle. And ever how that may look. These are by no means all of the scenarios. There probably could be three, four, or five dozen scenarios of, of how to really tackle this. But we wanted to break this down or at least start the conversation with, with some thoughts that we've had in talking with some of those other localities. As I mentioned, that it, that may be using some part-time as opposed to, to full-time. And so you can see, uh, these draft call scenarios, you can see scenario one that does include that capital. And so in the fiscal year coming up, the twenty-three, twenty-four, so if you see twenty-four, that's really now, that's July first. If, uh, startup capital cost and so forth, if we're saying, hey, yeah, we're, we're going to have to have eight new vehicles. Uh, we're going to have to have that three hundred and five thousand local match. Um, you can see potentially of about nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of, of, of funds that are going to be needed. Essentially eight hundred and some thousand, uh, new per set. Um, in twenty-twenty-five, you can see that, don't necessarily need any vehicles there for the next few years if, if that were the route. Four eighty-two, um, five sixty-one, nine eighty-one. And then you can see in twenty-twenty-eight, that's when the six SROs and the eight SROs grant essentially expires. And that's where that two million dollar number comes from, of ongoing cost. Now that's just one, that's just one scenario. Um, Mr. Carter, maybe, uh, next slide, if we look at. Scenario two, you can see there where, um, this is assuming no capital. That perhaps vehicles are, are found or utilized within the existing fleet in some way, some form, some fashion. But then also, rather than eight full-time additional, four. So then what is the amount of local funding that would be required at that point? You can see there at the bottom in twenty-twenty-four, July first, three hundred and forty-three thousand. And then you can see how that increases and so forth. And it increases in twenty-five and twenty-six COLA. And then also the expiration of the other grants. And then you can see by twenty-twenty-eight, by that time, it's about one point two billion, again, far less than, than, than two billion on the previous slide. And so, Mr. Carter, in scenario three, this is assuming all eight. Maybe retired part-time deputies are providing SRO security, uh, within the schools. You can see that amount there at two hundred and eighty-one thousand and then you can see it increasing again at twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight. Those are the years that the six and then the eight expire. Again, we're almost at a million dollars there by twenty-twenty-eight. Now, these are just three scenarios. Um, I'm sure there are multiple combinations. Now you can see in your, um, uh, spreadsheet, and Mr. Carter can, 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 can speak to this, the handout that was, that was passed out previously. What would that look like if there's a call share among the sheriff's department, the county, and the schools? And you can see, just splitting it just for number purposes, mathematical purposes, under scenario one, you can see into thirds. So if we had to come up again on the operational cost, um, of, of that support, roughly a hundred and thirty-five, um, thousand or so. Uh, for fiscal year twenty-four. Scenario two, you can see the numbers there, the, the one-third distribution. And finally, scenario three, you can see the distribution there if that were somehow distributed, uh, into thirds. Uh, we have had, um, some conversations and, and we, we, we've talked with the office of the sheriff, we've, we've talked with the school superintendent. If there were any other thoughts, we left the meeting two weeks ago and asked, uh, representatives of that meeting. Uh, if they had any other thoughts in terms of their input, um, appetite, if you will, ideas, if you will, on this collaborative approach. Of maybe, how do we spread these numbers out in terms of contributions from, from, from these other entities? Uh, we did have a conversation with the town of Rocky Mount. They were present in the meeting, uh, with their existing SROs. Uh, if there was any consideration that they may have, the fact that Lee Wade Elementary School, um, Rocky Mount Elementary School. And the Jero Center are all located physically in the town of Rocky Mount, of course. And if there is dispatch, uh, for McCall, certainly the, the town PD, that is their service area and so forth. Uh, so we have at least had that initial conversation with, uh, with the town of Rocky Mount. Mr. Carter, let's see. So some additional considerations in all of this. We know there's non-supplantation language as part of the state SRO grant program meeting. That if we were to receive other. that if we were to receive other federal dollars or if we utilize local dollars, we cannot utilize those as the local match, if you will, for the state, the state dollars, essentially. And then, of course, there's the ongoing future funding beyond the SRO grants, whatever that may look like. Again, that high number of 2 million, perhaps that more moderate number of 1 billion. Mr. Carter? And so in terms of next steps, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, really, we wanted to share with what's been done to date, share some of these cost scenarios with you, maybe try to share in some discussion of the grant award. We know that acceptance is a 60-day window. Looking at this local match, what does that look like? How perhaps that can be achieved, if that's the pleasure of the board, and certainly going forward? And then finally, the discussion of the ongoing SRO positions beyond the grant funding. There's no indication that is required, that you have to continue to support SROs beyond the grant funding. You know, those are just things to consider. And of course, if there are any questions, but we wanted to at least, Mr. Chairman, start, share the information, start the conversation, okay?
My first question is, thank y'all, first of all, for the work put into this. Explain to me the one-third funding formula, because the way I comprehend the budget, if we're asking the school and the sheriff office to pitch in a third, that just means they have to make cuts in their budget to make it work, because we fund them. Did I comprehend that correctly?
Correct, yeah. They can, or define it, or repurpose, if you will.
So basically, we'd have to come up with a third more, and then they'd have to make cuts to make their third work.
Potentially, or repurpose, yeah, their. Yes, that's correct.
That doesn't make much sense to me, but that's my comment on that. But, I mean, we fund both of them, so I don't understand how we can ask them to make cuts. I mean, it sounds like they're both pretty thin as it is, in my opinion. But I'm gonna say, right, I'll be quiet unless everybody else's comments.
Any other question?
I've got a couple of questions, and it's right along, Ronnie's, my questions go right along with Ronnie's just hit. Mr. Carter, one cent tax increase generates roughly how much money?
For real estate?
Real estate.
For real estate, one cent's about $700,000 of additional money.
My other question was, first off, it's to the sheriff. If I understand correctly, school resource, you put a school resource officer, they have to have three or plus more of your service on the road?
It was initially three when we came to work for the six, but they had backed off of that and it's now two, two years of law enforcement required.
All right, my question is, what is that doing to your experience on the road?
Well, it's a great question. And as you well know, our average year service on the road now is probably four years, around four years. So it's very tight to get that pool. We were fortunate to make the requirements necessary for the six. Again, I think it was proven on our part, and we divided up. Many localities just tried to get the full, whatever number they needed. But it served us well to get the six in. Now, as we're looking at the eight, I will say that initially, we had thought that we would be better served by full-time, not part-time. But we have several of our members that are close to the retirement or have already reached the retirement age that have shown an interest in this part-time piece, which does reduce the cost. And we have reevaluated, looked, and feel that that may be a good objective for us to move toward the part-time positions. Now, right now, I would say that maybe there's an interest of three that could grow. But there again, we're looking for their experience and how long they've been in law enforcement or may have been out of in law enforcement as to making a change, coming back. That's a factor that everybody's looking at as well. But again, it's challenging, but it has been, those that have shown interest in these positions, that are reaching the end of their career, maybe 20, 25 years, and they're looking at that retirement option, this has given them an opportunity to reevaluate, maybe I step into that part-time role.
I understand that and know that, but to replace that amount of money, you still gotta hire somebody to put in there, and that's cutting your experience from the road.
Correct.
Or from your other everyday activities.
Unless we're fortunate enough to hire somebody that's work and certified and coming from a different agency.
Now, your asset forfeiture, it was suggested that you use your asset forfeiture money. But that money is typically being used for other projects. What are you gonna do with those projects?
Well, and let me say this, that was one piece thrown out. We did not go into deep discussion as far as, you know, everything's just on the table. We're looking at it. And I'm not saying that that may be something we certainly could look at, but you well know, everything we do is kind of fluid.
Yes.
Right now, the regional jail numbers have come down. They were extremely high for years, now they're down. Now, where they go back up, they could very well, but under some of the sentencing reform guidelines, it's, they may stay down for a period of time. But you can have a very good year, you can have a bad year. But certainly, the forfeit asset money has benefited us greatly in our efforts of drug enforcement, which we do not have a real stout amount of money in our operating budget to do that. So that is a very prominent piece that helps us function in things we do. But there again, I'm not saying that we couldn't come up with some funds, maybe to help. I will say this, you already know this, aside from a vehicle, when you uniform an individual now, you really get expensive when you start talking about the radio and the body cameras and those things. You know, you're talking thousands and thousands of dollars to do that. So I'm not saying that we would have a longevity of funding to be able to meet that, for sure. But again, we're willing to look at pieces of things we can do. And from the vehicle standpoint, we're looking at, we've already are trying to project if we increase our mileage, looking at certainly used fleet or the fleet that could actually go into our school resource officers because the vehicle will be seated for most of the eight-hour day period. So we're looking at those efforts. And I will say that this certainly doesn't, the end result is still the amount of funding that is gonna happen. But this year, that was a big number thrown out, the 300-some thousand, then additional 400. But a lot of that is contingent on how quickly we fill these positions too. So it may reach that number if we got all eight, or if we weren't able to get all eight, that number certainly would be lower. So I'm not asking you to base it on that, just knowing how that movement is.
I said all that, I said all that to say and ask those questions, because I think Mr. Mitchell, he can nail on the head straight up. If these sheriff's department and the school was working within their budget, we can't ask them to do with so much. It's just not there. And the way the funding's gonna have to come, it's gonna have to come through a tax increase. Because if everybody's doing everything they're supposed to be doing, every department, if their budget is on schedule like it's supposed to be, I'm talking about the county and everything. If we keep doing this, short of laying everybody off and going back to square one when the grant money runs out and there's nobody there, and then laying off, what, eight, 10, 12, 14 people? I mean, that's it. And then, this is, this here is one of those, if we can, if we do this and continue doing it the right way. Look, I'm telling you, from my years on the sheriff's department, on the police department, three-year, three-year officer on the road. Wow. It just, it's dangerous, is what I'm saying. It is dangerous. Now, we talking about, we're talking about the way I see it, and I'll shut up, trying to fix a problem with school resource officers. But you're creating another problem on the road.
Mr. Chairman, a point of clarification, if I may. With this formula of doing thirds, I just want to keep in mind that the schools, as we all know, committed $300,000 quite a few months ago to this. And then paying for the ones that they're paying for, their annual contribution is gonna end up being about 419, 420,000. Is that right?
Total, including the town of Rocky Mountain, about 430,000.
Four, okay. So the schools are already paying and will continue to pay in terms of what's reflected. This is what's reflected here. So there's gonna be no more cuts that they're gonna have to make unless they just choose to, you know, put pressure on this, you know, in budget decision-making. So that's kind of, I just wanted to, especially those that weren't in the meeting, to just clarify that a little bit.
I know, I understand Chris and Brian. The scenarios, the way it's broken down, the point we want to show, by breaking it into thirds, to show that everyone has an active part. But at the end of the day, whether it's 93-plus thousand coming from the school, coming from the sheriff, coming from the county, it's all coming from the county. You know, and I've thought about this a lot over the last couple of weeks since we looked at it, you know, if the school has to dedicate more money, then they're gonna have to request more money from somewhere else. And so at the end of the day, this board's gotta figure out how to come up with some more money. And like Ronnie's here, we know in a clear way, it's through a tax increase, you know. We don't know what reassessment's gonna bring next year. All indication is that we're probably gonna be looking at doing a tax decrease because our neighbors around us appreciate some huge assessment numbers. And so they're doing their, you know, cutting back to keep those costs down. We as a board have to do heavy lifting and figure out where this current money comes from. I do think that the part-time scenario for eight, I like that better than the others. I know, I have a lot of friends in Henry County, other counties around. And, you know, you think part-time, well, how's a part-time officer gonna serve full-time during the week? Well, they're off June, July, and by being off June, July, two weeks of Christmas service, how it works out, they fall below the, what, 1,600 hours or 1,500 hours a year? They fall well below that, so they're considered a part-time employee. So of course, it doesn't require benefits from the county and things like that. Most of those locations under Henry County, paying $35 an hour for part-time SROs, and, you know, once they don't have any benefits, you're still looking at $50,000 a year for the SROs. Not too shabby. And I talked to the sheriff a couple of weeks ago, and I told him that my fear is, like Ronnie said, by trying to fix the SRO issue, we're gonna create another issue on parental control. And so we've gotta balance all this out, and that's not our job. Our job is to find the funding and figure out if we're gonna be able to fund it. Let's put the weight on the sheriff to balance out where his experience is. And I have full confidence in the sheriff and the staff that they'll do that at the end of the day and make that work. With all that said, we've got to roll up our sleeves and decide what we want. And how we're gonna face it. That's my two cents for it. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I like the thoughts of the third. I think third coming every entity, I think if you're spending taxpayer dollars, it's good for everybody to show that they have a little skin in the game. And what you're saying there, Ronnie, about how we fund them anyway, and I get that too, but never hurts to look at your own deal and see if you can put those dollars yourself. And Brian, you were just talking earlier about how we're probably gonna miss the personal property tax collection. We're gonna miss the budget. And would you attribute that to people not having money or inflation? What would you attribute that to?
I think most of what we're seeing when we compare year over year is just people not paying an uncollectible portion of taxes. And more than likely, that is contributed to an inflationary portion of the economy, just don't have the money.
And talking about adding, well, you said $700,000 for every dollar put on real estate. So if we're looking at $3 billion, we'll be looking at four, four cents on real estate. Might as well see. And I support the SROs for what they are, what they're doing now. I've spoke to a lot of people with the schools in my community, and everybody's happy with it. Bennett, Snow Creek, and Sonntag, they love having traps down there. They like it. And it's going well for them. If it was free, I would take the three of them in every school, but, and I also like Ronnie's point of, we're gonna wind up probably on the road, we have a lot of good police leaving to go do that. And it's just, I don't see a tax increase. And we have multiple other departments who are asking for positions as well. We haven't funded them because, and it stuck out to me, what y'all said about a maintenance budget. And I believe that's nothing but fair to taxpayers in times such as these, when they're obviously struggling to pay the taxes they have. I just can't see putting that on top of them. My two cents.
Anyone else?
So then, we get preliminary approval of the grant for eight? Is that correct?
That's my understanding. I may defer to the sheriff's office. I think they received notification just yesterday, perhaps?
That is correct, yes. And what I understand from it, there's a piece of, the award was made, but it's kind of wait till you get the official letter. And then at that particular time, if there's been some changes to your initial request, it's, I think it's more so now it's incumbent if there's anything different from our perspective, not from the state. That's what I presume. Me, that we asked for eight, and now the board has decided we're not gonna do eight, we're gonna do five. You know, we would have to make those adjustments or whatever that may be. So it's, again, I think it's more incumbent upon the locality at that time to see if they're, and then the award is announced. But we feel very comfortable with the eight. I will say two, I'm not sure if I remembered the slide, but the two that currently, that particular grant ends this year, and the county would have to, they've extended that another full year to pay just a 40% match for those first two. We have requested that, they approved that.
So what I will say, of course, I'm gonna be here next year when you guys will have the tough decision on what to set the real estate tax rate at after the assessment. I think it's safe to say that after the reassessment, it's gonna be significantly higher. So I agree with Nick on, yes, the last thing we wanna do is raise taxes on the citizens right now. But at the same time, I think I know this board well enough that this board will try to do everything they can next year to come close to equalizing tax rate, to keep the tax rates the same. What I would encourage people to do is look at keeping at least one cent of the reassessments to fund this. The phone calls and emails and being out in the public. This county wants this. I think everybody here has received those same phone calls and emails. And at the same time, we don't wanna raise taxes on our citizens, but I think this is money very well spent, and I've said it before. And I will argue with anybody on the fact that our ADM, I think, the drop in our ADM has contributed to parents not feeling safe, their kids are not safe in school. I hate to say that, but I think a lot of parents have taken their kids out of school because they don't want them getting shot, so they're homeschooling. I truly think the return on investment, or investment in SROs, we will start seeing parents with their kids back in school, knowing that there's someone there to protect them. I believe that 100%, I'll argue with anybody over that. So I think you guys will start to see the ADM increase. It might not be substantial, but about $10,000 a kid, state and federal, probably. So, I mean, you're looking at, you know, if we can capture 100 kids back from the fallen ADM, that's a million bucks it pays for it right there, almost. So... So, again, you guys know how quick to make motions to spend money, but, you know, it's as simple as the money that's needed to implement it now, since we've already approved the budget, which is why I wanted to not approve it until we had the SR discussion a few weeks ago. But we can, I mean, twice your tax collection money is over $20 million set in an account. We need a few hundred thousand dollars to make the 40% match. When you guys are working on the budget next year, you just have to account for it in the budget next year. So, we talk about taxpayers' dollars and not raising taxes, but yet we have $50 million set in the bank. That is not our money, it is the taxpayer's money. So, to just get it going, because this is going to take some time to hire eight SROs, whether they're full-time or part-time. We need to, if we think we're getting a grant, or it sounds like we are getting a grant, we need to allocate the money so we can start implementing and putting this plan into action today, so that we're getting good qualified applicants, and they're able to start putting people in academy to fill the spots on the road, and stuff of that nature. So, you know, if the, I don't know what the board's comfortable doing today, but I would simply make a motion to take whatever money's needed out of that account, knowing that next year during budget, when you guys are working on budget, that you might have to keep a penny instead of equalizing it completely, keep a penny. And I think the citizens of this county, of course, there's always going to be a few that are going to scold you for what you did, but we're put in this position to make these tough decisions, and if it takes a one-cent, two-cent increase in real estate taxes, so be it. But we, I hear it time after time that our children are our future, they're our most prized possession, if you want to call it that. And I try not to pay much attention to the national news because it just depresses me. There's a mass shooting almost every other day in this country right now. There's one in New Mexico yesterday. We had a murder on North Main Street over the weekend. It's not getting any better out here. We've got to make the tough decision to spend the money, and if we got to raise taxes to do it, we got to do it.
Brian, one thing I would point out, just logistically, if the board next year were to utilize some of the equalization, not equalize the rate fully, keep in mind that that will be a spring 2025 decision, which wouldn't take effect until July 2025. I'm just trying to put it in a context.
I'm sure.
You're two years out.
Also, remember the interest draw off all that money is what saved us from this past budget.
That's not always going to be the case. I don't think boards should put much merit into that.
There's some other options that we have on the table as well, so, if you're going to go that route, that is a viable option.
That's not going to get you to $2 million.
That's not going to get you where you need to be. But it's a step.
Yeah, we've got to, we've got to be looking at the $2 million number. Well, that's if, you know, if you go down to scenario three, if everybody did their third, you know, that bigger number is 1.1. But, you know, if we don't do anything to equalize the shares here, you know, you're looking at the county taking on a $2 million burden, and it won't, you know, that scares me to death right now. We, I mean, we don't, we can't operate our own organization to the level that it should be operating. We just got pressure all the way around us.
You know what scares me?
I know what scares you.
My child.
And it scares me too.
So, it's like, the money, money means nothing to me. I'd spend every cent of this county's money protecting children in this county. I've said it numerous times, spending money to protect our children doesn't scare me at all. And I've told you guys, you can place the tax rate blame on me, put it in the newspaper, I don't care. I don't simply care. Our children deserve this from us, and everybody wants to do it. Let's just do it.
Just get it done, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Sheriff, how many more SROs do we need? Have one in there or two?
The eight that we've asked for would take us to all our elementary's covered. It would be three at the high school, two at the middle school, and it would cover the Jerome Center.
So, you'd be eight.
Does that cover Leeway and Markhamale?
Yes.
And you're putting one now with the?
We do have one at Christian Heritage. And I will say that I met with the headmaster, had a great conversation, I think he came to the board and presented, with the understanding we were just going to get them through this particular school year, there would be more discussion, and I think he was going to discuss with his board as well, future, what it meant financially for them to contract maybe through our office and through the county to cover their schools well.
That would be them actually picking up the.
Correct.
The office.
So, how many officers are you down now?
We have a graduating class in March, or May 31st, that's going to give us five, four, four on the road. We just recently hired three that will be ready to go to the academy June 1st, and with that being said, those three that we just hired, we're probably still down with four.
So, with respect to your budget, Sheriff, when you, I'm sure you've been looking at that since this whole conversation started. I think that's, you know, your acknowledgement about the asset forfeiture fund, very appreciated. Do you have any flexibility in your budget? As an example, if you stopped taking female inmates and sent them to the regional jail, and went full census on males, how much money would you be able to recoup from that?
Again, I'm sorry, again, if I would do that.
If you would not take females in the, in the local jail and put them in the regional program and do full male census at our jail, what kind of, if you could run full census, what would that mean to your budget?
Well, the per diem that we're getting at our jail is much less than what we get at the regional. We're housing 40-some locally, most all of those are on a trustee workforce status. Of course, we have the bridge in the gap program that we're running, the addiction recovery program. That's where we end up bringing females back over, which only, it's currently two, and we're looking at starting a new class, and we'd be bringing three other females back.
Why can't that be done at the regional program?
There is a program at the regional.
That's why I'm not. I'm just asking, just, just, you know, looking at budgets.
Right.
You know, where there may be some opportunities.
Right, right.
Thank you.
But I understand, I guess, the numbers here would decrease our numbers there, which in essence would help maybe with the total numbers that we have lower than our numbers, which I believe it was just this, or if we look at the month of April, we were down from a number of 170-some to 136. And I know that's a big expense that you all have had to address several times over the years, certainly during COVID. And again, another reason why those numbers have dropped is the VOC released so many inmates during that period of time, their budgets were dropping, and they needed to recover more for, to show them their books, so they were asking for more inmates to come back into the state system.
I don't mean to digress.
No, no, no.
Just trying to analyze available funding.
How about vacancy savings? Do we have any, have we realized any vacancy savings with either the school division or sheriff's department or other county agencies that could possibly be tapped to help some of this county?
I can't, certainly there are some in the school system, I don't know if I can speak to that. Yeah, I mean, I think we'll see some vacancy savings in the sheriff's office. I don't know what that number would look like at total right now. Also, you know, it's a combination of that maybe could help. You know, probably have a year in surplus, there could be a way, whether that's the capital for one time, there are some options we could go to.
The bottom line, the bottom line is here, you can, what if it's all you want to in cutting budgets and doing this and doing that? This cannot be done without a tax increase, period. It cannot be done. Now, that's, period. You're going to go into the fund balance, it's.
One-time monies.
It's one-time money, plus we have been advised by our financial people to leave that alone. It will, it will. I'm telling you straight up, and I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer, I'm not the doulest either. You start hitting into that fund balance, you're going bankrupt, this county's going to be just like other counties. It's going to be like other municipalities. We got to leave that money alone. The only way this can be done, the way at this caliber, is we can't keep asking, cut, cut, cut. I mean, we, I mean, it's already been said here that we don't have enough staff already in the county and everything, and then people start retiring. It can't be done without, if we're going to go to this caliber, it's a tax increase now, you're going to sell that to your constituents. But that's the only way. I mean, this is just, we can sit here and guess and guess, and cut and cut. I mean, it's just like, I mean, it's like we were talking a while ago, asset forfeiture money. You know, you don't ever know how much that is, you don't know, you don't know what you're going to find, you have no clue what that is, but that's where, that's where training's coming from, that's where dogs are coming from, that's where maintenance is coming from, that's where special equipment's coming from, and all of that, I mean, bottom line, you say what you want to. We're going to do this, it's going to be a tax increase. It can't be done without one.
Ronnie, I would like to piggyback on something you said about the, about the reserves, fund balance, and, and capital reserve and so forth. Having been in New York last week with Brian and Chris going to the rating agencies, I'm telling you, we got a strong message from all three rating agencies that the condition that our reserve is in and our fund balance is exceptional, they look favorably on it in terms of us at least maintaining our bond rating, and they, they sat there and told us that, you know, any use of those funds, especially in operating, especially, is highly discouraged and would impact us adversely. So, that's just something, that's feedback we're getting from the very agencies that we're relying on to keep our outstanding bond rating, which is very, very important.
I agree with Ronnie too, it's whether or not you want to do a tax increase, and what we, you know, what we've talked about right there, a penny's not going to cover it.
Well, a penny next year's probably going to be worth more than $700,000.
Still not going to cover it.
It'll probably be, what, probably close to $1 million maybe?
Depending on reassessment.
Yeah, the reassessment number.
Without equalizing.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
But that, that depends on what we said of that, doesn't it?
Brian, have we got any debt retirement coming up, any significant, let me rephrase it, do we have any significant debt retirement coming up?
We do, coming in around '25, '26, and then '28, but a lot of that is layered in to work with the middle school project and even a possible CTE to keep the tax rate low there. So, if we use debt service out of that, we probably have to look at increased revenue to pay the debt service on the middle school project, for example.
So, there's going to need to be a revenue increase from somewhere, either cover this or cover this, but either way.
Either way at least.
Either way, it's going to have to come.
Tim, I think I've told you, you know, I've had conversations with some of you guys. The days of kicking the can down the road.
We're not kicking it forward again.
If you will, we're, we are past that, and unfortunately, it's going to require some courage of this board to acknowledge where the needs are with prioritization and understanding what we need to be funding. And we don't, we, we only had a balanced budget for '23, '24 because we had interest earnings. That is scary. That is scary from a, you know, being a fiduciary on this board, and we do not ever want to touch our one-time monies for that. So, so courage is going to have to be demonstrated to acknowledge the priorities and how we're going to fund them.
Let me just echo, if I may, Mr. Chairman, with Ms. Smith's point, a couple of things. Well, one, the fund balance is very important from the rating agency standpoint, but then secondly, and we were very transparent with the budget, that this is a maintenance stopgap year budget, as Mr. Mitchell already noted, and with the interest earnings, we're very fortunate that we have, that was kind of saving rates this year with those interest earnings. I, I think we'll be okay with, in the next fiscal year with, from that standpoint, there's no indication that interest rates won't come down anytime soon. However, further into calendar year '24, so mid-year next year, into '25, if interest rates start to go back down, that interest earnings have to be replenished in some way with revenue in the county. For our current ongoing operations, much less additional SROs. And so, we are at a very, very critical point in terms of discussion, in terms of new revenue and so forth, and I do understand this is a very, I guess, strong topic, if you will, in, in terms of how, you know, how to go about this. Appreciate the board, and certainly the discussion, Mr. Carter, in anticipating that we may get questions regarding some funding sources and so forth. You can see on the slide there, with the general property taxes, right now, now this is based on current assessed value, and as already mentioned, a penny's about $700,000, a penny on personal property's about $75,000. Now, again, that's, that's current assessed value rates, not necessarily new assessed value rates, which we'll want though to next year, and of course, Mr. Carter already shared with you earlier in his finance update, the cigarette tax and the meals tax, and those are just a few.
I have a question and a comment. Some of this property the county owns, the Farren property, the stuff on Windigat Mountain, in Ball Park, what's that worth? What's all that property assessed at?
Good question. The Farren property, Mr. Carter, we, rather than me give you a long answer on that, certainly I'll get back to you on that. It's not significant, I will tell you, it's not significant dollars, the last time that we looked at the, at the assessed value, but we'll, we'll get those values.
And I'm just thumbing this out there, we need to divest ourselves of this property ASAP. Put that Farren property on the market, seal bid, see what comes in, let a developer bid on it. Talk about kicking the can down the road, we've kicked that can down the road all the time I've been on this board. I'm just looking at an alternative way to get some money in here and get some profit back on the tax rolls.
No, sir. We'll get that information too.
And I've been preaching that for a long time. It needs to be gone. We don't need to be sitting on this property. We need to sell it, put that money back in there, get it back on the tax tables, all this profit.
And one other question, what's the town's skin in this game as far as providing some of these SROs?
The town participated in the meeting, Mr. Carter, a couple of weeks ago. They were attentive in, in terms of providing one SRO at the middle school and one at the high school. They didn't give any indication that they would not continue the SRO at the middle and the high school. Furthermore, you know, didn't get any indication, of course, that wasn't the entire council, that was just the mayor and the town manager. Didn't get any indication that they'd look to expand, say, one to Leeway or one to Rock Mountain, but we did make that known, you know, in terms of, certainly we welcome that participation, to your point, with the skin in the game.
But they did, and they voted to raise their meals taxes past week, several comments that were made that came from the town council, was they were looking for ways to continue funding, and that is our appropriate.
That's correct. From the news media reports, now how that's tied directly, and how much, is that's additional SROs or maybe the existing, I'm not sure, but it was indicated in the news article that the additional 1% meals tax would help go towards perhaps SROs. Again, I don't want to speak for the town.
Sure. Anyone else? Yes, let's take, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll come back, and then we'll come back if there are no other comments in regard to this subject, we'll shift here. Go ahead.
I was going to say earlier, I personally think that this, this SRO funding should be under the school system. Ultimately, we're going to fund them, but I think it should be their budget item, not part of our budget. That's just my opinion.
It kind of, in a way, it raises our level of expenditure that we have to balance the budget with. So, depending upon what dedicated revenue stream we would potentially attach. So, depending upon what dedicated revenue stream we would potentially attach, I'm looking to get it out of the operating levels. So, as an example, if you were to put a certain taxation next year, a cent out of the, you know, the reassessment or something, we dedicate a revenue source to it, that would keep it from raising the level of operating expenditure, which would help us.
I'm not saying that's a big punitive to the school system.
That makes sense.
I just think it should be their budget item moving forward. That's it.
Where are we leaving this at?
That opens up a whole other conversation there. Where is their expertise to take care of the resources? If we're going to move it, it needs to be at the sheriff's office. And that's where the training comes from. That's where the, at least nobody at this school knows how to do anything like that.
Well, I said from the start, it needs to be sheriff's office.
Well, it needs to be one or the other. I don't think it needs to be our budget item.
Either way, we're going to fund it.
Right. I mean, either way, we're going to fund it. But if we're going to take it away from this, it needs to go to the sheriff's department because that's where the expertise, they're the ones that's got this, big people and schools. They got, no, they, I mean, they're trying to do that.
That's just something to think about moving forward.
Nobody there knows what's going on. I mean, you show them a, you show that school semi-automatic rifle, AR-16A, a 15A, they ain't going to have a clue what's going on. It needs to go to the sheriff's.
So, Tim, where are we leaving that?
Chris, what action, if any, do you need from the state on this?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, given the, as I understand, once the letter from the board is given to the county, there's a 60-day window there. So, there is some time. I think we will need action from the board, whether to accept the grant funding. I think we do need direction from the board in terms of the committed local match. That does not have to occur today. It will need to occur within the 60-day window. What we can do, of course, we know we have our next board meeting, or our next regularly scheduled board meeting, I should say, is June 20th. Not to say that we could have another special call meeting. We'll talk about special call meetings and some work sessions momentarily. I do think we likely will have to have a special call meeting the last week of June anyway, because as Brian noted earlier, the state has not approved their budget. And all expectation is the state's not going to approve that budget until after July 20th, June 20th, rather. So, likely that last week in June, that June 20th meeting, last week in June, and potentially, depending on 60 days, or maybe to July. But again, we can provide the board additional information in the coming weeks and to help you all think through any feedback that we make and receive from you all in terms of how to look at this. I've heard several things today of, you know, ongoing revenue streams. If there is a specific revenue stream, such as a cigarette or meals or anything of that nature, of course, public carriages have to be held on those ordinances and so forth. It's the timing of that, whether that's now or whether that's this time next year. Because as we know, as the sheriff mentioned, ever how this is accomplished, if that is the end goal, through retired deputies filling positions or permanent positions, I do understand to fill positions, it's going to take some time. And so, the ongoing operational expense, you know, is it $300,000 immediately, July 1st? No, not necessarily, because as I understand, there's no possible way likely to have those positions in, you know, in the schools at that time. So, we can come back with more information. I'm talking about this, Mr. Chairman, but I just, there's no critical point, decision point today, if that answers your question.
Mr. Chairman, what is the matching fund for that A.S.R.O.s? County's?
About $305,000 would be the matching fund for just the A.S.R.O. of the ground. That is as applied for with all full-time. If we did a mix with part-time, that's going to change some of the numbers.
Which gives us money to capital stock.
Where would that come from?
The board would be to guide us as to, you know, as to possible areas of where that could come from. I will tell you, you know, that is, if the SROs are funded as an ongoing expenditure, we need to identify ongoing revenue. If that ongoing revenue is identified during the equalization discussion, if it's identified later in terms of other funding from cigarette, meals, others, that's one thought. If it's not identified, if it's identified as a stopgap, we certainly do not know what year-end surplus would look like at this point. But we would not recommend certainly going beyond the upcoming fiscal year without an ongoing commitment to funding, you know, an ongoing expense. That just wouldn't be fiscally prudent.
But if we could come up with $305,000 to fund this year, and then next year, we need to roll up our sleeves and decide either through equalization or through meals tax or cigarette tax or whatever, next year, we want to find some new revenue regardless, if we continue this program.
Most certainly. And I think, you know, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and you all heard us hopefully plainly, looking at the numbers, when the state funds expire, we're looking at significant dollars, ongoing significant dollars, not just hundreds of thousands, potentially a billion or potentially $2 billion, or however that looks over a five-year period. So, we're going to have to, as already has been discussed, going to have to identify some ongoing revenue.
Anyone else? Switch gears.
We get cigarette tax, meals tax, we need some more BPs. We need some more bills. My gracious.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. Moving on to the second part this afternoon of the work session is really to pick back up on several discussions and work sessions that we have had periodically with the board over the last year, really going back to last May, where we spent some significant time discussing public safety. At that time, of course, we're talking a lot about staffing or understaffing in terms of the EMS system. The board spent a considerable amount of time on that and worked and accomplished quite a bit. I will say, there are other things that we still need to, the work still needs to continue and to be completed. The board met again in July in a work session of last year, we'll review some of that. But really, last May and July, the board got into discussions in terms of funding apparatus and the needs for funding apparatus, how to go about that, what is the best practice, are there some numeric formulas, apparatus replacement that we need to be looking at in addition to consideration with the Volunteer Fire Association? And of course, the board had advised staff to work with the Volunteer Fire Association after the July work session. And you'll see some of that in the presentation this afternoon, as I understand where that is. And then, certainly, some other things have been accomplished over the last year as well. There was a volunteer grant program with the use of some carryover dollars. And of course, this board worked diligently on that with the Volunteer Fire Association. And of course, last month, the association was before you, and those grants were approved. So, some things have been accomplished. But we also know regarding the maintenance of our fleet, a lot of discussion in the January work session with public safety and the volunteer groups in terms of the need for ongoing maintenance, maintenance that's not getting any cheaper, nor is anything at this point. And of course, we were able to put some money in the budget, $60,000 of additional dollars for, to assist with maintenance, and what does that look like? And so, staff has put together some information. I know Mr. Ronnie Mitchell, during the budget approval last month in April, discussion with Callaway Rescue. We'll talk a little bit about that. I understand they're not here today, so I know we may need to pick that back up further. And of course, Mr. Mitchell, in terms of the safer grant, I know we talked a little bit about that earlier, that's still pending. And so, all that being said, I'm going to let staff jump in here and lead us through. I will say this, I know a topic as large as SROs, I know a topic as large as fire apparatus or maintenance requires a lot of time and deliberation. And so, if by all means, we need to come back as a board and staff for a meeting completely devoted to that or a work session and so forth, I know this summer, we have several work sessions. We've talked about CIP and facilities. Brandy's with us, we'll be talking next in June. But just keep in mind, because I know sometimes your meetings get compressed in the evenings, that we still have the opportunity to have these other work sessions. So, with that being said, I'll ask Mr. Stanley maybe to get us started, and I think he'll lead off, and maybe Mr. Ferguson will help some today too.
And I can maybe just sit down, because you said pretty much everything.
No, please.
I was going to say, remember that word, dedicated revenue stream, that words, because you'll hear some of that is through this discussion and through a lot of the things we're talking about, is a lot of it ties back to funding needs and the ability to have some revenue. So, as Chris mentioned, you know, we've talked about several things over the last year to 18 months really related to public safety. And one of those that we've got to check off the list that was accomplished at your meeting, last meeting or the meeting before, was the volunteer grant program. And Mr. Ledbetter's here, and thanks to him and his group for kind of working through that application and those requests from those agencies. And you guys approved those last time. So, I'm sure all those agencies are working through that process to order those things and so forth. And so, they'll be working with our finance department to process those reimbursements and payments for those. And then, Snow Creek, as Chris mentioned, the additional coverage there in Snow Creek. And just again, just we're still really waiting for this safer grant. And so, you're going to get tired of hearing us say that. Until we get a yes or no, we're kind of still waiting on that, because that's really, you know, what's going to help pay for it from the feds. If we're not able to get that, then, you know, we will have to find other ways in the budget to cover that. But that's really the only thing that's holding that up, really, to be able to advertise and start getting people filling those positions, is, you know, we can't do any of that until we get the official award on that or the official denial. So, I'm continually reaching out to our federal legislators to ping FEMA and say, hey, have you heard anything more about this? So, the one thing we do know is that it's not closed yet. So, what they've told us is, hey, you still have a chance, because unless you've gotten a denial letter, you're still in the running. So, that's about all I can tell you right now. So, as soon as we hear, we'll let you guys know as soon as we know anything. So, as far as today, we really just wanted to try to cover these three items at the bottom here for the work session. And as Chris mentioned, Callaway Rescue, that's really just a follow-up to Supervisor Mitchell's comments at the last meeting, and just let him and everyone else know kind of the status there. And then, certainly, since they're not here, we certainly can have more in-depth conversation about that later, whether, as Chris said, whether that's a special meeting or a future regular meeting. The other two items that we really want to try to get to today is the apparatus maintenance and replacement. And so, we'll let Billy jump up and cover those. So, just quickly, a little bit of background on rescue agencies in general is, over the past couple of years, and we've kind of highlighted the last two years here, of just how the county funding has kind of declined to the agencies, because a lot of them have either really completely reduced calls, completely stopped calls, and in some cases, actually dissolved the agency. And others are just running a very small number of calls. And so, we've reduced the funding down to that 78, 75, which is kind of the baseline number for the rescue agencies. And then, in '23, '24, which was the point that was brought up last time, Callaway Rescue was also reduced down from the full funding down to the 78, 75. In addition, in this budget, the Glade Hill Rescue Squad was cut down to zero. Two reasons really. One is with the new station coming on, the folks, the career staff that's in that station will be moving to the new building. But then also, that agency is dissolving, as literally right now, I think, and liquidating their assets and so forth. So, that was another change in the recent budget. And then, just a footnote, that Red Valley and Springs Rescue still receive the full allotment. And then, Cool Branch Rescue, which is obviously an out-of-county agency, but do a lot of calls in our county as well, they're funded by the county at $12,600. And as you mentioned, Supervisor Mitchell had brought this up and asked us to meet with them. And so, several staff members and myself met with their leadership on May 8th. And these are just some bullet items of things we talked about. We talked a lot about volunteer recruitment and retention concerns. They do have concerns about being able to not only recruit volunteers out in Callaway, but to keep them. Part of that had to do with, you know, the lower call volume, some of it is just, you know, lack of volunteerism in general. And so, we talked about a lot of things. And I'll mention Kim in the back there with our public safety staff is our volunteer coordinator. And so, she was there with us as well and talked to them about a lot of ideas. And I think even actually after the meeting had ended, I think she was still talking to them about opportunities where she can help them to, you know, hopefully increase their volunteer numbers. We talked about the reduction in the allocation, which was really kind of the premise of the meeting, but we did talk about a lot of these other things. Talked about the response rates, call volume. We talked about equipment needs and assistance and how public safety can help them in some of their equipment needs as well as training. And then, we also talked about the ambulance rotation, which we've talked about here before, where in the overall system, we've got some ambulances that have over 100,000 miles, and we have some that have maybe less than 10,000. I don't know the exact numbers. And just the ability to rotate some of those that have the higher volumes or the higher mileage out of our higher-volume stations, if you will, and rotate them so we can extend the fleet life of the overall system. That's just some of the call volumes, and we'll go through that whenever we have this conversation in more detail, just kind of showing how some of those response numbers have gone down. So, again, just some of those things we talked about, some of the things we're working towards with them. And we left that meeting, hey, we're going to meet again, we're going to continue to meet. Kim's going to continue to meet with them and see how we can continue to assist them with training, equipment needs. I think you guys already had done some things with oxygen tanks, changing those out, working with them on that, as well as the funding and looking at some ways that we can come up with maybe a kind of a tiered system of funding where if there's a certain number of calls, that equates to a certain funding amount. So, those are some of the things we talked about, and we left that meeting that, hey, we'll get back together and talk about those ideas further. So, just wanted to give a quick update and let you know, you know, we did follow up with them, we did have a conversation, and I thought it was really a productive meeting where we got to talk about a lot of different things. And so, I'll transfer now over to Billy and let Billy jump into the apparatus maintenance program, and then followed by the apparatus replacement plan after that. There's a mouthful to say over there.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. And like Steve said earlier, we have been meeting with the volunteer association, the district captains and the staff to look at some apparatus maintenance funding. And thankfully, the board presented us with awarded $60,000 in the budget, which we understand is a good start for that. But I just wanted to brief you just a little bit on the cost of this stuff. I was talking to Mr. Ledbetter yesterday, I believe it was, and he's got a tanker up there that replaces that tires for $10,000. It's not like replacing the car. Change oil in the truck is $2,500. So, you can see how these monies roll up real quick. So, we worked, staff worked with the association, worked with the volunteer chiefs. At our April 27th meeting, we presented this, the volunteer, I mean, the district chiefs took a vote, and we're here to present to you what we are planning on moving forward with, unless anybody asks for real Jackson School. So, the board has staff support providing more maintenance funding to volunteers. We reached out through emails and phone calls, we've got five years of maintenance now, requesting the volunteer agencies, we averaged that up, and it came to about $135,000 over a year's period to supply the maintenance costs that these agencies go through. And we're just talking about fire partnerships here. $60,000 was approved in this budget. We discussed the allocation of the volunteer chiefs. The district chiefs meeting, it was approved, you know, it was voted to begin covering routine maintenance items only. And that was defined as oil changes, brake jobs, windshield replacements and the like. And let me go back and end. We'll document, track, spend, and continue working with the board for additional funding. Development of revenue maintenance program, we feel may extend the life of the truck while a lot of agencies do really well on the maintenance, some just don't have the personnel or maybe don't do it exactly like it should be done. And we feel this would extend. And we feel this would extend the life of the apparatus. It allows for a lasting, long-term gap. Again, the district chiefs voted and approved the maintenance reimbursement up to, and I should have made it number 6,700, but $6,660 per company. So we're looking at that. So if everybody kind of has a share of the pot there and we approve that, they can either pay the bill themselves, make it to public safety and we'll reimburse, or they just have the bill sent to us, paid, and we'll take care of it. And that's entirely up to the local department. If they go under that, let's just say that the department A, public utilities, $4,000, then we can move that to another department to help them with something where they may have went over. Fund of the utilized, part of preventative magnets, each agency can decide to pay the invoice directly, be reimbursed, or have the invoice sent directly to public safety. At the meeting, there was some discussion that, you know, that some departments, as soon as they got the invoice, they wanted to pay it. Where with us, it may take a couple weeks to process it through. There were some other companies that just wanted to send it to us and we would pay it straight out. So that's up to each department and we can certainly work with that. Program, we evaluated according to district chiefs meetings. We have district chiefs meetings every quarter and we will look at that and make sure we were compliant with what volunteer chiefs association set and what staff need and work with Brian to make sure he gets the stuff he needs for the county purposes. Any large-scale apparatus, the cost of engines, pumps, tires, we would present to the board for additional funding. So a tank of three goes out and pops an engine and oil pump goes bad. These are high-dollar items. Again, the set of tires is $10,000. We would come back and ask you to help these agencies out with the person that. And I looked at some other counties around and most localities, this is the way they operate the force, costly items. If you lose a pump, I mean, if you lose a pump on a truck and engine, you're talking tens of thousands of dollars. Most departments cannot afford that. Staff and departments plan to be moving forward if this process begins on July 1st. Again, it's been approved with the volunteer association. Chief Ledbetter, I have a few things to add to that. Chief Peters, it's also been approved with the district chiefs. So we plan on moving that forward and implement it at July 1st. So now we will talk a little bit about fire apparatus replacement here. So just the history of where we got to where we are today. So prior to 2022, the volunteer chiefs of that department would sit around a table, just like we're doing today, and would discuss amongst themselves who needed a truck and where it needed to be in a rotation. And we typically worked out about a 10-year rotation, knowing that that was engraved in stone and we could adjust. And we've had that. I know, I think Ferb adjusted a truck, like Glade, when we moved them up or back, I believe Scruggs did. But we've seen where that, you know, that just wasn't sustainable with the cost of fire trucks today. I can remember when we bought a fire truck and two angulances every year. Fire truck was about $285,000 and angulances were running about $135,000. We bought our last three angulances in 2020 that were $236,000 a day. Same truck is $400,000 today. The last engine we bought was about $475,000. The truck is running about $850,000 today. So it's just not sustainable. And, you know, you heard it earlier with the sheriff stuff. So at May 3rd, we discussed utilization of a formula-based approach for apparatus. We presented that to a couple of board meetings. We passed it out at the, I provided it to Chairman Ledbetter for the volunteer association. We passed it out at district chiefs meetings. And I think the consensus was that was a good starting point. While it still needed some human input, we all realized that was a good, good starting point. So at July 18th, we discussed the International Association Fire Chiefs Formula Approach. This approach is put together with the IFC. It's adaptable. You can change the formula and tweak it. It's utilized for numerous agencies around the country. And board agreed to move forward with input and participation of volunteers. And I remember Chairman Kaidem saying that, you know, that while he agreed with it, he's kind of a significant volunteer background, that we needed that human element into that, too. So we worked with the volunteer association and district chiefs again to formulate an apparatus review committee that was made up of several different knowledgeable truck folks around the county. I think it was five or six on there to go out and look at each station's apparatus. We did that in September. And we also included, it was rotating around to the stations, that particular station chief. So we refer them at night to Ferb, the chief, who's added to the board. We would call with the Callaway chief, who's added to the board, helping feed his trucks and kind of give a gist to them. So January 17th, this year, we again come back and display the results that was provided at a handout. January 26th, we discussed this at the district chiefs meeting and all agreed it'd be a good starting point because everyone has said several times it needed human elements. So Chief, Chairman Ledbetter went back, discussed this with the volunteer association. And they put together a matrix, which pretty much mirrored what the formula said. There was a couple flip flops, again, based on the chiefs' input that the local station probably may need to move a truck up or back. Chairman Ledbetter presented that matrix at the April 27 meeting and felt that it could be moved forward utilizing that formula. And we actually took a vote of the group there. Again, it was a unanimous decision to incorporate the matrix into this formula-based program and move it forward. Current process, we talked about since the mid-'90s. 2022, the board asked staff to look at some kind of formula-based program and also capture volunteer input. We talked about that. Here's the apparatus review committee. James Richards is a member of Scruggs, also works for O.C., fire department, third Osborne Trucks. Chief Peters, who was me this year today, Chairman Ledbetter, who drives a lot of heavy apparatus in his state, day operations. Scott Towan, who's chief of Henry and has a military background, I think, with his pretty large of trucks. And then the local chief came in and all the apparatus were reviewed and graded in the committee. I have the raw grades at the office. If anybody wants to see them, we used to post numbers and put them in that formula-based sheet, provide that to the association and to the district chiefs. They came back with the matrix and we kind of merged them together.
Billy, is it possible for us to see, or are you gonna show us the criteria in the matrix?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So, asking you to show us.
There you go. Thank you.
Following criteria was utilized, and I'll break this down, explain each one of these. If it was vehicle type, it's an engine, a tanker, a brush truck. Different ones have different values you should assign it for. Of years in service, pump size, tank size, the mileage on the truck. There was a point system we gave here. So he got one point for 10,000 miles. It was a gasoline engine, two points for 20,000, I mean, one point for 20,000 miles. It was a diesel engine. The engine hours, we tend to get rid of fire trucks at low mileage. Fire trucks won't run a whole lot of mileage. We may send one to salvage for 12,000, 15,000 miles, but it will have, you know, 10,000 engine hours because it's sitting there and running, seeing everybody. The maintenance and repair costs, as you look around at other jurisdictions, a lot of them, when maintenance starts exceeding 80% of the initial cost of the truck, it's kind of to look at how we've remedied that. How reliable was the vehicle condition and the type of service it provided? And we'll break down Ms. Smith there a little bit more. So look at the age. We give it 0.075 points for chronological age. The initial IFC had one point, which would have driven the score higher, but as a group, we've lowered it down to 0.075. So if it was a 10-year-old truck, it was 10 years times that, it would calculate that and give you a score there. Miles, we talked about. One point for each 10,000 miles or each 20,000 for the diesel or 500 engine hours of use. And it would calculate that to a score out and look at that. The type of service, you would score one, three or five. And this score that came from that committee that went around with input from the local chief, all the assigned type of service units was exposed. So five people would be given a five because, you know, probably 90% of fires that go out, that pumper or engine, depending on what station, it's the first truck out of the door. So that's, you know, it really, a station is hard to function without that kind of truck. So he got a five where you may have a command vehicle, you gave it a one because, you know, we can have a command vehicle go out of service and still function out, the park is still functioning. Reliability, one, three or five, depending on the frequency that the vehicle's in a shop. Five, we assign the vehicle in the shop two or more times per month on average. And we see that, you know, where you've got a vehicle that's in the shop more than it's out of the shop. Or one, if it's in a shop about once every three months or so. So again, these points were plugged in. Maintenance and repair costs from one to five, looked at total maintenance and repair. A five is assigned the vehicle with the lives. Maintenance and repair cost was equal to greater than the vehicle's original purchase price of one to 20% for the lives. We compared that, looking back. Now, this right here wasn't exact science because some of these trucks were 30 years old, so we really didn't know what the original purchase price was. Condition of the truck, this catamaran took in the condition body, condition rust, interior, accident history, anticipated repairs. I was talking to Chairman Ledbetter about a truck that we moved out of their station. We put the new truck in. And if you just walked up and looked at the truck sitting across the parking lot, it looked almost new. But if you walked up to it, leaned on it, you'd think the front fenders would fall off of it or the door was loose or something like that. It really had some issues. Point range, less than 18 was excellent. 18 to 22 was good. 23 to 27 qualifies for replacement and 28 and above means immediate replacement. Now I want you to know that we can adjust these numbers however that they need to be adjusted. We may want to say 18 to 25 is good. This was based on what the IFC put together and that a lot of other departments nationwide was using this. So here was the initial chart that we had. It included brush trucks and tank trucks, mini pumppers, units, everything. So you can see anything in red or yellow is either past or needed to be replaced. So working with the association, they came back in the matrix, they presented to me. And if Chairman Ledbetter had anything that you feel like you need to hear, it took into effect what they identified as big trucks, the engines, the tankers. They kind of moved brush trucks off to the parking lot a little bit. So I went back through, as we do with this next sheet, this took the brush trucks out. It took the units out. I did leave mini pumppers in and attack trucks because they're environmental organization and they are fairly large pieces of apparatus. This is just engines and tankers.
Director Burden?
Yes, sir.
May I make a point?
Yes, sir.
Just I want the board to see, and I want them to be proud of what they've done over the last three and a half, four years because they should be very proud of what they've done. But the four or five lines that are all blue and then go to green are trucks that have been bombed once for a year. Correct?
Yes, sir.
So kudos to the board for all the hard work and dedicating money to buy those trucks and keep.
I would love to add to that because it has been, you know, really helped with the system. Because, you know, it was days when we'd have a truck out of service and we'd need a truck to go there. And at times, we had one department, one night, that no fault of their own, came in, checked their trucks off, went out, topped off the fuel. These trucks were diesel, topped off with gas. It was gas in the tank. We're still working with the money. But it ended up costing about $25,000 in damage. We had to pay to get fixed and we're working to recoup that money. But we had to, it allowed us, they shut that whole department down. We were allowed to go to another station and relocate some trucks to keep that station up and going. So it, kudos to everybody in that right there. But this is just to take a look at this chart. One thing that I'll probably jump ahead of myself a little bit here that I would like some feedback from the group is that, and me and Chief Peters have this conversation at least once a week, and I brought this out at the last chiefs meeting, is that we kind of, as staff, would like to have some direction from the board is to, when you think of fire departments, you take the fire system, what is your goal there? Do you want every truck to be less than 20 years old? The newest version of NFPA 1901, it just came out, which doubles fire apparatus, just moved back to 15 years. So does your goal have every truck NFPA compliant? Or is your goal just have a truck as a building and go out and put the fire out? And where I'm going with that is the association came back and was very conservative with their estimates. It said that they understood the funding, they understood the workings of the board and the county, and they was recommending one truck a year, which we'll get to that. But if you look at this, one truck a year will not get to that NFPA standard. There'll be four, five years of two and a half, maybe three trucks a year. Again, I'm just putting that out, but I would like to have some conversation with the board sometime on what is your goal and objective, what you think about a fire department.
Billy, you said that NFPA just changed their standard from 20 to 15.
The last edition of.
15 for a first front.
How's that gonna affect the ISO wise?
It won't affect the ISO, I say, because several reasons. That is the baseline that you utilize and it's not a, it is and isn't a concrete number. As long as your truck still functions and you can simply get tested, the pump or does what it's supposed to do, the truck can do what it's supposed to do, you can still use it for ISO. That's just one criteria that you use. And the other side of that is ISO says, this is the number, so it's two different things, but it will affect the ISO. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, you know, there's really no good and bad when you accept NFPA or not. Some localities do, some don't. Some accept, you can accept sections of NFPA. And I would think that there's probably not a department in this country that meets 100% of NFPA. You know, Chief Luthman worked for Burnt Facts for 28 years and they didn't need NFPA. You know, got tons of money up there. So, but is that the long-range, high goal you want us to shoot for? Don't want to, we're not gonna make it, you know, probably in the next five to 10 years. But we're going out here looking for trucks and replacing trucks. And we'll add that every truck you buy from a manufacturer is NFPA compliant when you buy. They don't seem to a truck that's not. But if they don't, if we don't keep up the age, like these trucks we gotta get out of 30 years old, that truck's not NFPA compliant. And my fear of that, and I think Chairman Ledbetter is from the volunteer association point, if something was to happen here, we went to litigation, is a good attorney will come and say, well, you know, Chief Ledbetter or Mr. Whitlow, you know, NFPA was the national standard, this is their recommendation. Then what did you know that they didn't know that helped you make that? Again, there's trucks out there everywhere that are not NFPA compliant.
We truly do everything we can to try to stretch the life of these trucks and get everything we can out of them. You won't find a bunch, any county department that's more frugal with trying to spend the county money than we try to be. It's, you know, and when we bring this stuff back, we understand there's limitations, just like the SRO stuff. But it's, it's, we're bringing it to your attention that, hey, these things don't last so long. And honestly, if you're one year, one truck a year, we're getting further and further behind. We've got trucks now that's 30 years old. NFPA is now recommended 15 for frontline service. So every year, just like y'all were talking about a while ago about kicking the can, every year we kick it. We're getting, the gaps are getting wider and wider.
I'd like to add that the time you order a truck now from manufacturers is getting to be three, three years.
Three to four years.
So at 20 trucks needing replaced, you take three years for the first one. Three times, the thing is that's 60 years. That truck's gotta last 57 years in next rotation before it comes up again, buying one truck a year. So next time we'll be back or whatever with, it takes longer to do it with one truck a year.
Thanks, guys. So community collaboration selected with the volunteer association, public safety, we're not evaluating the apparatus. And we also agreed to reevaluate on an annual basis. So we did it September, sometime this fall, we'll go back out and do it again, look at the same thing. Volunteer association presented recommendation of one truck per year. Again, we need to decide instantly with the board on where do we want to go with this emergency service organization. And we and the volunteer chiefs understand that these are costly items. I mean, you're buying engines now. I mean, you're buying engines now. Rocky Mountain has an engine on it right now, $1,669,000. A less expensive one is in the $500,000, $600,000 range. The recommendation that the fire association staff put together will be included in annual public safety CIP request. And we presented fees to the chief, district chiefs on April 27, and they voted accepted to support the above process on that. So here is the current apparatus, and going back some, so 1819, we ordered an engine a power and a ladder, those trucks in service, this is also utilized in some CARES funding. These trucks are also financed. And they, I think the first one comes off something like 2027, but these are also paid for with ATL money. So we get ATL money, this year's right at $200,000. It's based on the insurance, it fluctuates a little, but that's what that money is managed for public safety, that's just help there, a county call for, to make the payments on these trucks. And that's Fort Mountain, Boozville, and Scruggs. Should have put that there. Brush three is a fair, it is currently in service. That truck used to buy at $70,000, now you're probably looking at 100, 125. It's tanker six, snow creep, tanker nine, branch chimney, and engine three, which was a stock truck that we just got up there, and I think that truck was $640,000. And it was a stock truck. It really wasn't, didn't meet all of Fairham's needs, but they made some cuts and needed work and come some compromises, and was able to make it work. The next truck up is a pumper five, a tanker five. We've talked about this several times, and it's tanker seven, engine 14, and you will see as we took this on out through, I think it's 3038, show you where it's at. And this was a collaboration between the committee on development matrix and formula base process that IFC put together. So first truck, 640, the Calaway truck, if we order it today, it's $524,000 with a 730-day delivery. Warren County had just recently received a truck, it took 41 months to get it. That's 30 and a half years. So again, this truck, when we started talking about back in May, was about, I think it was like $440 something. And that's, it's 524. And you'll see the age of that truck, 32 years. There's no water in Calaway, there's nothing else with water. The water definitely needs that truck. And it's, again, this is when we've got to check it out. And there it's thrown out. Two, 37, 38. Right now, these trucks are going up about 7 to 10% a year. Now, I will tell you that when we work with the truck vendors, there's a couple things that came up. And Chief Loomis had a conversation down in Richmond last week with, at a summit. One of the things to do, custom cost, is move from a conventional cab, from a custom cab to a conventional cab. I talked with Bobby St. Clair, who's one of the reps we deal with, that costs about $150,000 right there. But it also has some limitations. But a lot of urban areas are going to that. I was at the rescue conference, I think, telling a thing down in Bayou, Fairfax County, had a truck sitting on a conventional cab. It was a four-door conventional cab, and it was a conventional cab. And Ryco County is going to give them some. And again, when we get these prices from peers who we've long time used, now Calaway wants a point, at least where he can announce a truck. But we have a spec that is collaborative development between the volunteer chiefs and public safety administration. That's what we send out to peers to send us a price back. There is some cuts you can make to that, that save you some money. Now, whether we can get $400,000 off, I don't know, but the example I've used with some folks is, you know, every firefighter loves a Q2 Cyber. It's got to have a Q2 Cyber, it's not a fire truck. It's cool, it sounds great going down the road, every kid loves to blow it, but it costs about $3,500. So could an electronic Cybering, it maybe costs $500, done the same job? Probably not, but anyway, it is something that you, that's just an example or something. And you see these trucks here, it's, again, this is where we need some guidance from the board, is to, what is your goal? Because basically, these trucks will all age out. We're not going to probably wear one out before it ages out. So brush trucks will be reviewed individually. Right now, a lot of brush trucks, their firmhood could change, most of them in good age. Next one coming up, they boost me. These others, we've bought the last seven or eight years. This does not accommodate for the Westlake engine, we kind of looped it off to the side, but it also does not take into effect, and we're talking about funding, any EMS vehicles. This is fire trucks only. And we need to look at some capital funding, so we're going to recur, because this doesn't go away. We have this conversation every year. So the quote for this truck is about 524, 333. Ironically, in the matrix that the volunteer association put together and in the formula base, it, both of them recommended that Calaway's truck be replaced. So I was kind of, you know, pleased and see that both formulas were working, and it came together. Anticipated delivery is 30 days. Calaway Volunteer Fire Department, we met, and they approved this. I've got the specs on my desk, if anybody wants to see them. And the budget, this was in the budget, used one-time funds, and we like to respect and recommend moving forward with this purchase of this truck, but it requires some board action to appropriate the funding, because even the budgets pass this in there, that the funding has not been appropriated for. So as noted, Calaway's is to be replaced this year, delivery is still two years out. We don't have to pay the truck until it arrives. So it's not, we can prepay it, but if we don't, that's the price, 524. We get a little bit off of that if we prepay it. Is the county works for stand up to date with hose replacements? The board should work to identify the issue, dedicate an annual funding. We've talked about that, we've talked about some options to do that. I think you mentioned Saturday here today. In advance of next year's budget, the board, we should set a specific annual amount of fire apparatus, or a maximum dollar amount, 550 or such. What we're talking about there is that we've looked at other localities, how they do things, and it's a whole hodgepodge things out there. I looked at our surrounding localities, some of them pay 100%, some pay 50%. I found one that paid 59%, and there are some that don't pay any. But it's up to the local volunteer department to raise the money. Now, what they did in a lot of that was that, just an example, what one would do, instead of the county retaining all the ATL monies, they give all of it to one department a year. So like this year, we got about 200 grand coming in on ATL. So that would went to department A. And then it would rotate it all around. We've got nine departments, it took nine years for that to rotate back to them, but that's the money they got. Now, still got their operational funds, all that other stuff, but they got basically $200,000 capital money to do whatever they please. Most of them did trucks, some did building improvements, but it was there, and that's the money they got. It had the volunteer department had to come up with the money. And this is a lot of money. We've talked about maybe working with the board and the volunteer fire associations to set up, develop a spec, go back and look through the spec, then develop a spec. And I'm just throwing out numbers here, it doesn't mean, you know, we got to go with this, but maybe we say 550,000 for a tanker, 750,000 for an engine, that the county's going to put in, and then it's, the other has to be raised for the local volunteer fire department. That is one option that's been discussed. Other considerations, the stock versus custom, we talked a little bit about that. And flexibility among multiple manufacturers here, so we took off a demo vehicle. I took a delivery in an ambulance today. I told you a while ago, the ambulance is how $400,000. I took a delivery in an ambulance today, we paid $298,000 for it. It was a stock unit, it came as this, the only input we had, it's what color striped and put on it. And it was two-wheel drive, that's the only other thing, all our trucks were four-wheel drive. But I could pull it out today, and you couldn't tell the difference in the trucks, if you didn't know it was stock. So I think there is some things that we need to look at, we'll be forced to look at, and it's going to be, I hear you guys say tough conversation, I think it's going to take some gluttony. Five o'clock. Is there any questions?
We're looking for questions. Right over here.
Just a comment, I appreciate the presentation. Very proud of the board for what we've done with purchasing fire trucks, putting money towards maintenance and repairs, upping the operating budget for volunteer fire departments. So I'm very happy to be part of all those decisions over the last three and a half years, so I think the board deserves pat on the back. Keep that forward, progress. Take care of our volunteers and our page staff, give them the tools and equipment they need to do the job.
Why are you going to be a advocate for public safety? We really appreciate that.
Appreciate that, Director.
And I think as of today, you had up there on the slide for the upcoming need, the immediate need, rather, the Calaway truck, we have budgeted $550,000 for replacement of that truck, but we still need to allocate those funds so that they can make that order.
Yeah, that truck has not been ordered.
Right, yeah.
We need to, even though that we helped up on other allocations to wait on the state, would we be appropriate to make that allocation today, or should we wait on the state?
I think it can be, you know, it's a pleasure of the board, because the state revenue should not, didn't take, there won't be any state additional revenues.
This will come out of capital reserves.
This will come out of the capital reserve. This is the one, you know, we've set aside the 20 million, if you will, but then there's another one and a half million above that. This would come from that one and a half million, and then what we know more about VOTI and other things from the state for those other items.
Okay, so as far as what we need to do today, the action, the important action we need to take today is we need to allocate those funds.
To appropriate those funds.
That's right. So we need a motion.
Yes.
Make a motion, you move forward.
I would do it in an open session.
We are. We are open.
It's a pleasure of the board, it's certainly an open meeting, we are in work session, but if you feel more comfortable, you know, in the board room, certainly under the action items. I think the board's occasionally done either, but it may be more appropriate if Jim Graham were here to say, you know, to take action in the board's room.
We'll wait till we go back out. We'll wait till we go back out, make sure that. I just got to.
By the way, Mr. Graham had to step away to another meeting.
He'll be back.
He'll be back.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Manny just sent me a text message, said dinner is here.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd sort of like to thank Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Wetbutter, Chief Peterson, thank you all, and then certain staff, you know, working on this. What I will say, I know the big work needs to be done. It's like, is it budget, you know, is it dinnertime yet, Mr. Whitlow? Because I know we talk a lot about big numbers with SROs and apparatus replacement. Just on the scale, I'd just like to remind the board, the board will recall, every year, we're putting about $2.2 billion or so towards our capital improvement. And years ago, it was around $2 billion. And prior to COVID, certainly at the time, I had put forward wanting to increase that amount by 200,000 every year, really for 10 years, to get it to 3 million. We haven't been able to do that with our budgets. That being said, no one could have thought of what would have happened in the inflationary environment post-COVID with the cost of apparatus and ambulances. As Mr. Ferguson already pointed out, you know, a three or even a $400,000 ambulance, a one, it's $250,000 or $300,000 fire truck, now 750,000. It's far outperformed our budget. And so if we are going to move toward, and there's a consensus of replacing one piece of fire apparatus per year, either an engine or a tanker, just like with the SROs, and it's already been said by the board today, we're going to have to make some really tough decisions, going to take some courage to look at some of these things, whether it's an ongoing revenue stream in some way. And I know that doesn't get any easier on this board, but I know we've got a lot to discuss going forward in next year's budget as we look at the capital. Because clearly, if it were not for ARPA and CARES, we could have, with our existing revenues, we would have not been able to purchase those fire trucks. And so that being said, a $550,000 Calaway tanker, fortunately, we've got the reserve to do it, but in terms of the ongoing operation, that $2.2 billion, when we look at the sheriffs, the IT department, all the other county departments, there's no possible way to buy a $500,000 fire truck and the ambulances and do all the other county capital. That's plain and simple. It's not going to happen. We don't have it. And so I know it's going to take a lot of discipline for us and Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We certainly, as much time we need on this going forward in the next year's budget, we'll take the time, but I can't reemphasize that enough.
I hate to pile on, but that'd be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, we still have other public safety issues to discuss as well, you know, when it comes to animal shelter, animal control, public safety administration building, you know, some other really big issues we also need to talk to when we have more, you know, more time to get into those.
Well, if I may, Mr. Whitlow, those are the types of things that when we have our capital planning meetings.
Yes.
I think we need to take that broad, comprehensive view across all departments. We need to prioritize those things. That's going to give us, and be instructive to us as we look into next fall. We've got to set our priorities, and we've got to fund them accordingly, if possible. That's why we keep getting behind.
And you might need a dedicated day or time to talk about those.
I think that capital planning is going to be another meeting. Yeah.
It's going to take a while.
Yeah.
Minimizing is going to be a lot.
I do have a lot. And I'll be honest, I don't know if the new public safety building will make it until next year.
It may not, but.
It may be sooner than that, depending on our lease situations.
Yeah, that property is currently for sale, so where we have the public safety building. So it's a high-type dirt and season.
Right. We do have some stock gap thoughts on that if that were to occur, but it better be considered.
Just roster's correct.
I have a good renewed lease coming on the board.
You sure you don't want to run it?
Some of these offices.
I'm thinking reconsider.
All right, anyone else have anything?
Got that key fallen by Kerry's office.
So dinner's here, right?
Dinner's here. I guess go ahead and get your dinner, because when we come back, I'll let Chris do his update.
And only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you take the roll call, please?
Supervisor Nick Mitchell? Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kunda, absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Right. Next order of business for appointments, have any board appointments need to be made at this time?
I do, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
I would like to, I guess I have two separate motions. First of which would be that I would move to reappoint Susan Nelson as the Gills Creek representative to the library board, effective term to begin 7/1/23 for four-year term.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. You want to roll call or just voice vote?
Voice vote will work.
What was her name again?
Her name is Susan Nelson.
Okay, all in favor of Susan Nelson being reappointed, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Let the record show there are none opposed.
And I have one more, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion to reappoint Charlene Jones as the Gills Creek representative to the Recreation Advisory Commission, whose three-year term will begin for reappointment July 1, 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to reappoint Charlene Jones. All right, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Charlene Jones to the Recreation Committee. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Let the record show there are none opposed. Any other appointments? All right, moving right along. Yes, we wanna do the fire truck appropriation now or later? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
It's Callaway tanker, right. Make a motion, we go forward with the Callaway tanker, it's been presented. Money's already been appropriated for.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and allocate the funds for the Callaway fire truck. The money has already been appropriated in the budget, and this way they can go ahead and order.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, it's the motion to appropriate.
The motion to appropriate those funds, yes, and we have a second. Any other discussion before we take a final vote?
Thank y'all.
Madam Clerk, you wanna do a roll call since we're spending money?
Chairman, who was the second on that?
I had.
Give it to Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell.
Okay, all right. Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundav is absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, we will, at this time, we're recessed for previously advertised public hearing as follows. I'll have Lisa Cooper come forward, please, as Director of Planning, and Todd Daniels, also VDOT residency administrator. And we're going to discuss the secondary six-year plan.
Mr. Daniels.
I like the way Lisa just passed that football right off to Mr. Daniels.
Passed the buck.
We've trained her well, haven't we?
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good to be back with you this evening. So we talked about this a little bit last month, when the public hearing was requested. I'll rehash a little bit of the same information, so bear with me. Hit the highlights of the plan. I've got a couple maps I wanna show you, and the public as well, which is good information. So, I'm gonna go ahead and get started unless there's any questions before I get started.
Go ahead.
All right. So, Franklin County Secondary Six-Year Plan Public Hearing for the fiscal years 2024, which begins July one, twenty twenty-three through fiscal year 2029. As we've talked about before, the secondary six-year plan is updated annually, so every year, we go through this process, we revise the plan. The year that we're talking in drops off and we add a year to the end of the plan, just like most all government fiscal plans. So the funds are allocated by the Commonwealth Transportation Board, CTB, to our counties across the Commonwealth to perform construction work on secondary, the secondary roads. So construction dollars, not maintenance or, or safety monies or anything like that. And allocations are based on revenue projections provided to the department, from the Department of Taxation. And the year that we're getting ready to go into FY twenty-four will be our current year in this plan, and those dollars are set. The other five years or the out years, as we call them, they are projections and they do fluctuate, as we're very well aware of. The draft plan for fiscal year twenty-four through twenty-nine totals two million one hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred twenty dollars. Allocated what we call the residency level, we manage the funding once the board sets the priorities. And the current plan, including the draft plan, includes five rural rustic road projects, three countywide call centers. And you'll see the countywide call centers at the end of the plan. And we use those for items that aren't related to a specific project. For example, countywide traffic services will add new signs to the secondary system, charge to that project. We'll do some safety studies, we'll charge to that project, if you will. So those are just recurring annual, call them call centers, they're line items in the budget. There's one other project that I don't highlight here, that's the Fairham Pedestrian Bridge, that is complete, as you all know. But that remains in the plan because there were some secondary six-year plan dollars allocated that a few years back. So once that gets closed out, that'll fall off of our plan, but it's there for placeholder right now. So in the current plan, we have completed the hard surface with our contractor of Timberline Road. There's still some work we're gonna do with our local state forces with those construction dollars on Timberline, and that'll get wrapped up. Route six fifty-nine Bar Ridge is the next project, number two. It is fully funded, we've actually basically completed our PE work, and we'll build that this summer. And that, we're gonna get some positives out of that, I'll highlight in just a second. And then third in the plan is six fifty-seven Red Valley. Novella, Route six thirty-five Novella is fourth. They'll both be fully funded in FY twenty-seven, we got a little gap, because we're funding Red Valley, it's number three, and then we fund Novella. And then number five in our plan is the continuation of Webster Corner, so it's the next about seven tenths, if you remember. And we need, as of this draft plan being produced, we need eighty-nine thousand, three hundred eighty-two dollars to complete the estimated funding on Webster Corner. So because we need money on Webster Corner, that means we don't have funds remaining in the plan to allocate to a new project this year. So last year, if you remember, we were able to add Novella and the Webster Corner, the second piece. Year before that, I don't think we added a road to the plan. So it, as many of you have seen, and Ms. Smith especially, we don't get to add a road every year, unfortunately. So, something to discuss. So, this is the draft plan for the twenty-four through twenty-nine cycle. You can see the total allocation of three hundred eight thousand, seven ninety-three and twenty-four. We see a little uptick in the following years, and the fluctuation is in the unpaved road monies. Telefee is one hundred and thirty-four, four ninety-seven, historically in the plan. Whatever is allocated for the upcoming current year is what they program for all the out years. That's actually reduced, and I'm gonna show you a graphic in a minute to show you the reduction we've seen on that. These are the first three projects that I highlighted, Timberline being the first one, Bar Ridge and Red Valley. And I know it's a little, probably a little hard to read, trying to squeeze this much data into the screen, but this is just the funding scenario and how it works. Basically, top left to bottom right is how we distribute funding. So moving on to the last two unpaved road projects, you see Novella and then Webster Corner. At the very end, under balanced to complete, you'll see your eighty-nine, three eighty-two that's remaining to be added to Webster Corner that we will fund in the next cycle. So these are your call centers. The countywide traffic service is the first one, that's an annual allocation of thirty thousand. I will say that we don't use that thirty thousand every year. We don't scrape it every year, and I use that term a little loosely, but what'll happen is, we'll go back and we will look at what's been funded, look at what's been spent, and if there's dollars remaining in any given year, that just gets reinserted back into the six-year plan. It doesn't go away, it doesn't fall off the table. Anything in this plan stays in the plan unless it's spent on a project. So occasionally, we actually realize a little bit of funding as we scrape the corners, if you will. Countywide engineering survey, ten thousand dollars, and then the countywide right-of-way engineering is much less, twenty-five hundred. And you can see a zero in twenty-three, twenty-four, and you'll see that because we're okay on our account balance. So I put funds in it, in speculation, if you will, for twenty-four, the out years. I don't need any this year, we're okay with our balance. So next year, we may see twenty-four, twenty-five being a zero as well. We edit that every year. That's a placeholder for that money in case we need it. We don't wanna, we don't wanna go in a deficit on a given line item. And then the Fairham Pedestrian Bridge is at the bottom, and you see that's requiring no funding, it's just showing the project in there, because as I said, we did use some secondary six-year plan dollars on the bridge. So this is a table, the comparison I was talking about of what's happened over the last year, and I do this each year. And I, I wanna explain the table a little bit, because it can get a little bit confusing. So with the very first, the top table, is the twenty-three through twenty-eight plan, obviously twenty-three's not there because it's gonna drop off. Then the next table is the current, these are the allocations for the current plan. Now, kinda ignore FY twenty-nine, because all I'm comparing are the five common years in the plan. So I'm comparing the FY twenty-four through twenty-eight projected allocation last year to the FY twenty-four through twenty-eight projected allocation this year. And the third table shows that difference, once again, ignore the FY twenty-nine column, and you'll see our telefee actually went down by nine thousand one hundred twenty dollars per year. And as I said, typically, the telefee is a repeat across all the years. We've typically seen a little bit of reduction in telefee annually. The unpaved road monies, we see a reduction in twenty-four, the upcoming year, we were even. So what we projected last year for FY twenty-five, same projection this year. And then a small allocation reduction in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. So when you total those five years up, and the difference, we actually see ninety-four thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars less in this plan, not including your FY twenty-nine allocation compared to last year's plan. So that's a fairly significant reduction when you look at the total value of two point one million across the plan. You know, that's just real quick math, that's a four or five percent reduction. So what I wanted to show you, well, hold on, let me back up. Any questions about the plan before I show these maps, the math or anything? All right. So I haven't been able to show you this before, these have been existence for a few years, but it's some really good information. And it'll highlight, I think, some of the reasons for, for the funding that we do get in the county. But there's a lot more information than the two maps I'm gonna show you on virginioroads.org. I was talking to Mr. Ferguson earlier about bridge weight limits and emergency vehicle weight limits that we deal with. That data's here. Now, a little bit of it, a little bit of it is in GIS language, so a good GIS person, there's a wealth of information here, and it's public, it's out there for everyone. But I'm gonna highlight a couple maps for the county, for the board in the county. So a map you're looking at here is obviously the Commonwealth of Virginia, and all those purple lines are unpaved roads across Virginia, and this was interesting to me. So you see, we got a pretty, pretty big concentration along the I eighty-one corridor, the mountain chain, however you wanna look at it. We got a little bit towards the south there, but, but a huge concentration along I eighty-one. So I'm gonna zoom into the Salem District. And you say, well, we don't care about Salem District, we care about Franklin, and that's true, but just to highlight, you can see my mouse. So you see Bedford, and we'll go around counterclockwise to Bodata, to Craig, to Giles, we'll come down to Pulaski, and then we get into Carroll and Patrick, where the city of Stewart, the town of Stewart is, and of course, Martinsville. So that, and then up to Franklin County. So that, that's the circumference of our, or the perimeter of our district, if you will, Ronald being in the middle, Montgomery and others. But what's interesting is, just to our, to our west, our neighbor to our west, Floyd County, pretty purple. And Floyd's smaller than Franklin is, but they've got, by a pretty decent margin, the most unpaved road miles in our district. And that's, that's significant, especially when you look at the total secondary mileage of the county compared to Franklin. I don't have the exact numbers, but, you know, out of six hundred and fifty, call it round numbers, miles of secondary road, two hundred and fifty are unpaved. That's a, that's a, that's a lot. Franklin, you know, somewhere in a thousand, a little over, of secondary road mileage, seventy-six are unpaved, according to our inventory. And then you can see the other counties. Part of the allocation, the unpaved road, let's see if I can do this. All right, so the district grant unpaved road is specific to unpaved roads that carry fifty vehicles or more a day. So of those seventy-six that we have in the county, not all carry fifty vehicles a day, some of them have much less volumes. So those roads, we can't apply the district grant unpaid road monies to that. And that's, to best of my knowledge, taken into account when they do these allocations across the Commonwealth. So. So I wanted to show that map of the district, I think it tells a lot, it's good information. I'd encourage anybody to go out there to virginioroads.org and poke around and see what you can find. Like I said, there's a lot of information out there. Mr. Chairman, that is my presentation, I'll be glad to take any questions.
All right, anyone have any questions for Mr. Daniels?
I'd like to make a couple comments.
Go ahead.
If I may. Todd, once again, thank you, thank you Brian and Lisa, for your advocacy and support of Franklin County. My comments are not directed at you. You know, from the Salem office, I've been trying to work hard with CTB and so forth. It's very distressing to me to see a ninety-four thousand dollar deficit, or ninety-one, whatever it was. You know, our monies keep declining, therefore our needs keep going up. And, you know, through meeting with you guys, it became apparent to me that a lot of VDOT monies are being funneled to smart scale and to the urban areas. We understand that, but what's not happening is that there is no, there's no proportionate shares going to the rural counties in Virginia, and the acknowledgement that does not exist there from the state level. And so, I think my colleagues know I've been, you know, working with CTB on this. But one thing I'm gonna do in the near term is begin working with our colleagues through VACO, our neighboring municipal boards. What I'd like to do is put together a consortium of a couple reps from each of the, of our regional partners. Get a consortium together where we can talk as rural counties about the challenges that we are having with regard to secondary funding and our needs going unmet, and as a matter of fact, increasing. I've talked with Mr. Daniels about this, and I just feel that there's, there's hopefully gonna be some strength in numbers when we as rural counties start talking about the monies that need to be coming to the rural counties. I feel like we're being overlooked. When you see funding decreasing, and then we know where the funding's going, there's no acknowledgement of the issues that we have in this county. And I'm sure that our neighboring jurisdictions are gonna feel the same way. So I'm gonna start a conversation at the VACO level, we have a regional VACO meeting here shortly. Begin that and further that at the VACO annual meeting this fall. So I wanted to let my colleagues know, number one, that I'm very interested in pursuing this with your support, which I would ask for. But in light, and I think what Todd's presented to us is proof that the monies are going in the wrong direction through no fault of yours. Again, I will clarify that. You all are doing the best you can with the monies that you have in meeting need across, you know, your district. So the problem lies with the General Assembly, and the problem lies with Commonwealth Transportation Board. And to the extent that even funding formulas may need to be revisited through the General Assembly, that starts taking consideration how we can get good outputs from those formulas that start to recognize the rural localities in the Commonwealth. So I just wanted to mention that to you all, it's kind of a pet peeve of mine at this point. And I would really, you know, like to pursue this more regionally with your support, hopefully. Thank you, Todd.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll add one thing to Ms. Smith's point, of those dollars that are allocated to the unpaid road account, if you will, twenty-five million statewide, that's been a fairly steady number going back to twenty fourteen, fifteen, somewhere in that range. So ever how that get divvied up, it is, it, when it comes to road construction, it's a fairly small pie. So just, that, that's where that number starts, and then we all get that across our counties, so twenty-five million.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Todd.
Yes, sir.
Okay, at this time, no other comments or questions from the board. At this time, we'll open the floor for a public hearing on this matter. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, Chairman, I have no speakers for this item.
Okay, is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak in regard to the secondary six-year plan as presented by Mr. Daniels? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And board, what's your pleasure, go ahead, Ronnie?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready.
All right. We have a second.
I will.
We have a motion and a second to approve the secondary six-year plan as presented by Mr. Daniels. Any discussion before we take a final vote? Madam Clerk, can you take a roll call?
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundav is absent for the vote, Chairman Tatum?
Mr. Chairman, I would like if you could lead, getting some concurrence on the work that I would like to do. I don't wanna pursue this if the board doesn't support.
Let's wait, and we'll go.
You wanna do other matters?
Yeah, we'll go to other matters.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
All right. Okay. Next item, we'll have a hearing in accordance to repeal Chapter eleven, motor vehicles and traffic. Who do we have presented on this one, is this Lisa? Yours?
I don't think so, but I.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at our county attorney who prepared the draft ordinance and I think gave the board a brief overview earlier. So if I may, Mr. Gwynn.
If this is the ordinance that we discussed earlier this afternoon with regard to the exemptions for personal property tax and with regard to the amount of the registration fees. And the idea is that since they're all in state code anyway, that it really doesn't, it doesn't help us any to have it in our own code. We'll just go by the state code.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments for Mr. Gwynn before we open the floor? All right. Seeing none, at this time, we open the floor for public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up?
No, Chairman, I have no speaker for this item.
Okay. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak to the board in regard to this item? Seeing none, we will close the floor to public hearing. Board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go for it as it was recommended.
Make a motion to repeal it. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to repeal this ordinance and file back to state code. Any further discussion before we take a final vote? Seeing none, take a roll call.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundav is absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Okay. Next one, Lisa Cooper. Application for special use permit.
We tried to throw you a curve ball, Lisa.
It might be this new system that gets me off here. Okay, there we go. Good evening, Chairman Tatum, members of the board. We're here to do our public hearings like we usually do on Tuesdays, the third Tuesday of the month. The first one is for a special use permit. It's, the applicants are the Yerkeys. They would like to do a short-term rental on point four-nine acres. The property is located at four-oh-five Kenwood Road. It's in the Union Hall Election District. And as I said, they would like to do short-term rentals and their future land use designation is agricultural forestry rural residential. Just to tell you a little bit about the property, this is the only dwelling on the property. This will be the only dwelling for short-term rentals. The applicants own and reside full-time in the adjacent parcel, which is at four-thirty-five Kenwood Road. This dwelling happens to be one-story residence. It was built in approximately nineteen sixty-five. It consists of three bedrooms, one full bath, has a total living area of approximately a hundred and eighty-nine square feet. The adjacent properties include the applicant's single-family residence and also there's some vacant agricultural property that surrounds it. All the properties that surround this particular parcel is Zoned A-one, and it should be noted that it's on a state-maintained road with a private driveway and has a parking area for guests. We like to give you a vicinity map of the location in the county. We also like to give you an aerial view. Basically, the square right here is where the short-term rental would be and the applicants live here. And so you see their property surrounds the short-term rental. We like to give you the future land use, which is agricultural forestry rural residential. We also like to give you the zoning, and I said that the surrounded by A-one zoning. We also require the applicant to give us a concept plan. You can see that there is a single-family dwelling, the parking area, there is some trees and bushes. They, we do have them locate where the septic field is and the well, and there is a garage on the property. Staff's analysis, with Smith Mountain Lake being a prime vacation destination, the proposed use would expand your temporary lodging options where guests can visit and enjoy the proximity to the water and other amenities that Franklin County has to offer. In addition, the extra-larging for short-term rentals would continue to drive tourism and add economic value to the county. The property owner lives next door to the short-term rentals, so I am sure that they will have no problem keeping an eye on the people that they're renting to, and if there's any problems, they're right there. The short-term rental would not be a substantial detriment to any of the adjacent properties or change the character of the zoning district. The Planning Commission held their public hearing. They did come to a vote of seven in favor to approve the special use permit with five conditions. The special use permit will be tied to this property, and the only dwelling that can be used is the dwelling on the property. If they choose to use another one, then they would have to come back through the process. The owners shall have to always comply with short-term rentals regulations found in the Franklin County Code in Section twenty-five dash one thirty-eight and Section five-point-five dash seventy-two. The owners will be required to have a proof of liability insurance of a million dollars. The owners will also be required to register the short-term rental every year and have it inspected. If the short-term rental, if there needs, if they decide that they want more than three bedrooms, they will have to adhere to regulations with the Virginia Department of Health. And I would be glad to answer any questions, and the Yerkeys are here to speak.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Cooper? Will, state your name and address for the.
Thomas Yerkey, four-thirty-five Kenwood Road, Glade Hill, Virginia.
Catherine Yerkey, four-thirty-five Kenwood Road, Glade Hill.
Thank you.
I think Lisa pretty much covered everything. We're the only residents on that road. And we own the property all the way around the property, on the both sides and everything. So I guess if there's any questions, we can answer those.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Ms. Yerkey? Don't see any.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Okay. If there are no other questions from the board, at this time, we'll open the floor to a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for this one?
Mr. Chairman, I have no speakers for this item.
Okay. Anyone here that would like to speak in regard to this item of short-term rental? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the floor to public hearing. Board, what's your pleasure?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve. I find that their use will not be of any substantial detriment to adjacent properties, that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, and that such will be in harmony with the uses permitted by right in the zoning district with the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community. Therefore, I move to recommend approval of the applicant's request for special use permit to allow the short-term tourist rental of a dwelling with the five conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve as presented. Any discussion before we take a final vote? Madam Clerk, can you take a roll call, please?
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundav is absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes. All right. Ms. Cooper, item number four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're here to discuss another special use permit. Jeff DePierre is the applicant and the farm at Cedars Ridge LLC is the owner of the property. The property is approximately five-point-five acres. It's Zoned A-one agricultural. It's located at one-thirty-five David Lane in the Union Hall Election District. The purpose of this special use permit is to allow a campground public. The future land use designated designation for this area is low-density residential. Just to give you a little background of the property, at one-thirty-five David Lane, the Board of Supervisors in two thousand eighteen approved a private recreational facility. It is also the site of the South Lake Spa and Salt Room. Also, the owners have come to need places for their guests to stay overnight, so they are proposing to do this campground, but they only want three vintage campers that would be in the wooded area behind the spa. Each camper would have a kitchen, a coffee maker, and a microwave. As I stated, the spa needs space for overnight guests, and there is a great need because they do a lot of retreats and people do come from, they can tell you how far away. I know one lady said she had come from West Virginia and they have trouble finding places to stay. The owners plan to use the existing well and septic that's on the property. We did have one citizen that spoke at the Planning Commission. She has actually been a client and is definitely in favor of the campground where people would be able to stay. Just to continue, as I said, David Lane is where this is located. It's a private drive. One of the conditions of the original stat, the original SUP for that recreational facility that you approved back in two thousand eighteen says that they, that the DePiers have to maintain that private drive up to the spa. Also, in that special use permit, there is an original buffer that is a thirty-foot wooded buffer that is being preserved along the northeast and west of the property lines. That would still have to be preserved. Staff has received two phone calls inquiring about the signs posted, and then they received one call about the application and asked for it to be emailed. And then I told you about the lady that spoke at the Planning Commission meeting. We like to give you a vicinity map of the location. We also like to show where the property is located. So Rock Cliff Road is a state-maintained road, so the DePiers have to maintain this private drive up to the spa. Plus, this wooded buffer that you see, thirty feet of that has to be, has to remain from the original SUP. And you can see the two houses that are right here that are a distance from the spa. We also like to give you the future land use map, which is low-density residential. We also like to give you an aerial, well, not an aerial view, we've already given you that. We like to give you a zoning, so you can see that most of the property surrounding this is A-one. This is R-one, but keep in mind that the DePiers own a lot, they own all this big parcel and I think one or two of these parcels they own. We like to give you a conceptual map. So this right here is the spa. The location of the campers would be here, the parking for the spa, and there's enough parking for the people that would be staying in the, in the campers. Staff's analysis of this, this is a minimal impacts to the neighbors. You do still have that thirty-foot buffer that shall be maintained. You also have that the private road has to be maintained by the DePiers. The wooded buffer would conceal the RVs and it would also be behind the spa. And, excuse me, in addition, the three RVs are at the back of the existing business. Most travelers to the spa would not even be able to see that they're back there. We do not think that this would change the character of the zoning district, that it would be in harmony with other uses in the area, and that it would not be a substantial detriment to the surrounding area. Your Planning Commission did hold their public hearing. Like I said, there was one speaker in support. The Planning Commission voted for a seven-oh vote to approve the special use permit with five conditions, that the property would be substantially in conformance with the concept plan submitted by Mr. DePierre. The owners shall have to comply with the supplementary regulations for campgrounds that are in the zoning ordinance, Section twenty-five, one fifty-five. There shall be only three RVs on the property. All other types of RVs and tents shall be prohibited. The owners shall have to obtain approval for the campground from the Virginia Department of Health and comply with VDH regulations. The owners shall also discuss access for emergency apparatuses with the county fire marshal before the site plan would be approved. And I would be glad to answer any questions, and I know Mr. DePierre is here.
Any questions for Ms. Cooper?
I've got one. I was reading here. So the, the campers themselves do not have bath facilities, they're gonna have to use the bathroom and the restrooms at the spa.
That is one of the things I think that the Health Department has spoke to Mr. DePierre about, in that they have to have some type of bath facility, and I think the agreement will be that they will be using the spa, but I'll let Mr. DePierre talk to what he's talked with Ms. Huffman about.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead.
We, this organization, we gave them a special use permit a while back to use a barn. Is that correct?
Yes, we did. It's on, basically, that's on this property right here, the large property. This is the barn.
And have we had any complaints or problems from that?
I have not received any complaints in my office.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Other campgrounds that have came before, they're required to have septic, right?
That, you have to adhere to the VDH rules and regulations, so the way, they need to have a bath house, but it's my understanding that VDH, that they do have a full bath in the spa, that Lorena Huffman with VDH would allow them to use that where they would not, they, they would not have to construct a bath house.
What is the septic for the salt spa, you know, I mean?
That's what they would like to use, but there must be some regulations that they cannot with the Virginia Department of Health.
I mean, if they, if they got all of them rented, is the septic system for the salt house able to maintain the use? Am I using proper terminology here?
It's my understanding that the septic is large enough that it would have been able to hold those three RVs, but Mr. DePierre could probably talk to that better than I can.
Ms. Cooper, help me understand something, and it may just be language. How does a campground and a low-density residential equate the same?
Low-density residential is usually single-family dwellings, and we say one, one to two units per acre. Since there is an existing build, business there and it's surrounded by agricultural, plus with them owning a lot of the property, these three RVs, it's not like that he has a fifty, you know, site campground that people are gonna be bringing campers in. These are gonna be permanent. People will not be able to bring their own facility. In my opinion, they would be allowed in the low-density residential, that it wouldn't have an adverse effect on the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the campground, I know we, since I've been on the board, we've had a couple, but like the one down at Magnum Point, I mean, it was, to do a campground, there was an elaborate list of things that they had to have in place, and I don't see a lot of that stuff here.
He, well, the.
I know it was detrimental to them to getting started because it was so expensive, what the county, you know, made them do, so.
Right. But they were bringing campers in. They didn't have permanent campers. They will have to adhere to all the regulations that the campground that you're talking about had to hear. That's in Section twenty-five, one fifty-five. So if this does go through, Mr. and Mrs. DePierre will have to get an engineer, and they will have to have an engineered site plan. It'll be determined how much area they're gonna disturb, whether they have to have erosion settlement control. The area for these campers is not gonna trigger stormwater like that other campground did. So he still has to adhere, they still have to adhere to the same regulations.
But didn't that campground have to have all those plans in place before we voted on it?
No, they did not.
They didn't?
They had a concept plan that you, that this board worked on, and it came back, I think in front of you with some changes, but no, they did not. They went through site plan review. In fact, it's still in our office. We are waiting for the bond to be posted.
The, the concept plan was the picture with the drawing on it?
No, their concept plan was more detailed because of the number of lots.
No, I'm talking about this one.
Yes. This one, in my opinion, let me find it. I did decide, since they were only using three campers, that they could do it themselves, that it didn't have to be engineered. But when they, if this is approved by you, then this concept plan, they'll. this concept plan, they'll take it to an engineer and then an engineer is going to have to show where the campers are, the distance. They'll have to show the parking area, where the spa is existing, the greenhouse, the buffering. They'll have to adhere to anything the fire marshal says of how a fire truck has, or an EMS vehicle has to get back to the campers. And they will have to adhere to whatever V D H says they have to do, along with the engineered plans. VDOT is requiring a traffic narrative and site distance. So, the engineer will have to look at the site distance and do a traffic narri- narrative from Rock Cliff to the spa. So, that's where some of the similar things of the campground that you were talking about had to go through during site plan any erosion settlement and stormwater review. If that helps answer the question.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Cooper? Don't see any. Thank you. This time we'll open the floor for a public hearing on this matter. Madam Clerk, we have anyone that wants to speak?
Thank Mr. DePier, if you don't mind, either side of the panel.
Come on up. Will state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jeff DePier and we live at uh, one twelve Cedar Ridge Road, which is the property that backs up to the five point five acres where the spa sits.
Let me, let me pull up your slide over there.
We've got, she's gonna bring up a slide for us.
And they should be able to collect it out of the next one.
This is uh, some photographs of different events that my wife is uh, organized for the spa. You folks had some specific questions as far as the utilities for these trailers. We're following V D H guidelines and for what they call luxury RV sites. And we meet the parameters for uh, septic well and electric utilities uh, tied into the spa. Each of the campers will have fully functioning bathrooms that will be tied into the existing septic. We've had Marty Prilamann come out, uh, he's issued a letter. The health department has come out and we actually have the permit from them to uh, use that facility. There's gonna be minimal uh, amount of tree removal. We're looking under the guidelines where need to have three thousand square feet per campsite and we're gonna try and keep it to that. Uh, this is the area where the campers will be and it's, it's essentially, the reason that we went down this is because we have quite a few guests, customers, that come from quite a long ways, in some case, four or five hours away. And short-term accommodations here in Needham Hall are very difficult. We try and keep, quite often, we have groups of people and we end up with them scattered across half the county trying to find accommodations for them, and it's become quite uh, difficult to, to keep these groups together, which is our goal. By trying to do the vintage campground with the campers onsite. Any, any other questions?
Are there any campers there now?
No, sir, no. The, the site, as you saw, is, is still treed. We have not done any, any improvements at all to the site until we get approval.
Okay, so there, there are no campers on the property at this time?
No, sir, there's not.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Yes, go ahead.
This airstream that we saw here in the beginning, is that, that's not on the property?
It's not on this property, no. I believe that that airstream, that specific one, is a representative example of the type of campers that we will have.
All right. I'm confused now because I thought, I think when I was reading this that you were gonna use the restroom facility and toilets at the spa itself. Now, are the campers gonna be hooked up permanently to the septic and well?
Yes. The V D H requires that there be a separate second bathroom essentially, and we, we have an ADA accessible bathroom available in the spa. And V D H has approved that second bathroom, that the ADA accessible bathroom has, that meets that requirement.
All right, but my, see that airstream right there? That, that camper or something similar to that will be hooked up permanently to your septic tank that's there now.
That's correct.
And that septic tank is adequate according to the V D H to handle three light campers.
Yes. The requirement for uh, what the V D H calls a luxury RV campsite is a hundred gallons per day. We have a letter from Marty Prilamann, a practicing engineer, that our septic system meets those requirements.
And your well, you got enough well water?
Yes.
Take showers and everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have no more questions.
Any other questions?
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman, I have no speakers for this item.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in regard to this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Ford, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to speak to Ms. Cooper again, please.
Okay, Ms. Cooper, come forward.
Yes, sir.
If I understand correctly, I just want you to uh, to confirm. Before the permits are issued, he'll have to have those campers hooked up properly and the Virginia Health Department will give you a certificate stating that everything is hunky-dory.
Yes, um, when we go through site plan review, um, a copy of the site plan will be sent to V D H and then Ms. Huffman will make her comments and she will give some type of permit showing that the trailers can be hooked up to the septic system and the well, and then that there is another restroom that can be used. And I will make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are you taking questions or comments? Are we still in public hearing?
Uh, no, we closed public hearing.
Okay. I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
Um, for my colleagues on the board, um, I am deeply troubled by this application for the following reasons. An overarching concern are all of the unknowns um, that are attached to this application and, and they are things that are fundamental to us being able to approve something that we don't know what the end result's gonna be with respect to VDOT's requirement for a traffic narrative to determine the traffic that will be generated by the proposed use. Not done. VDOT requirements for the review of the entrance location to make sure it meets site uh, distance requirements. Not done. V D H's formal assurance, again, the whole bathroom issue, um, I am hearing mixed messages on that and I'm highly uncomfortable. Septic is, is really defined by two people per bedroom uh, for capacity, um, and using uh, the spa bathroom for an eighty-eight compliance issue and then the showering and all. Um, I'm very uncomfortable with um, the lack of clarity. Also, the assurance that appropriate metrics have been done to determine the land being disturbed uh, for stormwater erosion and sediment permitting. Um, again, in the conditions, it was said that there would be a discussion with Andy Pendleton uh, for fire and EMS travel distances uh, for emergency apparatus. A discussion is not adequate uh, for something like this. Um, so these, this application, I know it's a campground application, but it has all the makings of a short-term rental. Um, and somewhat, there are some light comparisons. Um, and if you think about what Mr. Mitchell said with regard to the, some of the other campgrounds with short-term rentals um, and the fact that they're in my, in my, you know, estimation, these unanswered questions are gonna be fundamentally every single one of them's gonna be fundamentally needed to be intact, and I understand, you know, this is a problem this board keeps having with these applications, with all these outstanding issues. We're being asked to approve these things when we're, we're projecting that the site plan reviews and comments are gonna go a certain way and we have no assurances. So, my, I have a lot of discomfort with this application. Um, and Mr. Chairman, when you're ready, I'll make a motion.
Anyone else have any comments or questions before we, before we talk about?
I've got a comment. If I understand correctly, every, uh, all these concerns that you, you've before the uh, permit will be issued, they have to be answered.
Yeah.
So, that, that, that right there answers the question that it's not gonna happen until that's done.
But are we, I'm not willing to put my stamp of approval on it because I don't know how those discussions are gonna go and what the outcomes are gonna be. And Lisa has taken some, you know, she had, you know, said that she took some liberty um, you know, with talking about, um, I think it was the, the number of, what was it, Lisa, that you said? That you took some discretion with in allowing?
Oh, when we were talking about the low-density residential for the future land use, that I made some discretion.
Yeah, so, yeah, and thank you. No, thank you, Lisa. I appreciate that. So, yeah, Mr. Mr. Thompson, you're correct. This has been the board's um, practice. Um, but I look at this on a case-by-case basis. Um, and I've had a problem with this for months, probably years since I've been on the board. Um, but this application is just, I can't put my approval on it for the reasons I stated.
Any other comments? Seeing none, floor is open for a motion.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would find that such use will be a substantial detriment to adjacent properties, that the character of the zoning district will be changed thereby and that such use will not be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the use as permitted by right in the zoning district and with public health, safety, and general welfare to the community. Therefore, I move to recommend denial of the applicant's request.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Say.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the proposal. Any questions or comments before we take a final vote? Madam Clerk, do a roll call, please.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
No.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundev is absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
It is a yes to deny.
Okay, Lisa Cooper. Item number five, application for special use permit.
Thank you, Chairman Tatum, members of the board. This is our last public hearing. It's for another special use permit. Um, the Poffs are the applicants and the owners. Um, the property is twenty-two, a little over twenty-two acres. It's zoned A1 agricultural. It happens to be located at one, one hundred Poff Lane in the Boone election district. This application is for a short-term rental. Um, it should be noted that this property is located in the two-twenty north cor- uh, the two-twenty north corridor designated growth area. It also has a future land use of suburban residential, two units per acre. Just to give you a little background about the property, this will be the only dwelling that is located and it being requests for short-term rental. The la- the re- shall be able to talk here. The applicants have registered the LLC, the end at Maggity Creek LLC, and intend to reference this and market it for the short-term rental as the end at Maggity Creek or the end. Um, it's a two-story, uh, single-family farmhouse that was built in nineteen forty-nine. I will give you, when Mrs. Poff gives her presentation, um, she has some interesting facts about this farmhouse that I think you all will find interesting. The dwelling consists of four bedrooms, two full bath, and has a total approximate living area of four thousand square feet. The applicants currently resign on the adjacent property full-time. Um, the adjacent properties also has another single-family dwelling and open land. All this property is zoned A1 agricultural. To continue the background, the, the road that this uh, property is located on is a private road. It's a private drive. Um, there is a parking area and three-bay garage. If you look at the aerial on this, um, the one hundred Poff Lane is where the short-term rental is. Um, one oh one is where the Poffs lives and then there is a house at the end of that road. Those are the only three individuals that access this um, private road. Just to give you some information, and the house that I was talking about is probably, another house is probably over two thousand um, feet away, but doesn't access this road. We did have nine letters of citizens supporting um, this S T R. Um, we did receive one phone call that was inquiring about the posting, but there was no, they didn't either support or deny. We'd like to give you um, just a vicinity map of where it's located. This is also the aerial of the property. Um, basically, I'm trying to find the house. I think the house is right here. And then um, this is the private road that I was talking about. I'm losing my bearing. Here it is. This is the private road, excuse me, the house, the farmhouse is right here. I think I have the right one. Um, and then the Poffs also live down the road, so they will be there in case there's any problems. Um, this is your future land use map. We also like to give you um, an aerial. You'll see that most of the property is A1 that surrounds it. If this is part of the town of Boone's Mill, that's why you don't see any zoning there. This is a conceptual plan. Um, this is the, obviously, the farmhouse. This is the septic, um, so it is pumped here to the septic. The water is back here. This is the three-bay garage that I was talking about, so Poff Lane is down in this area and it comes up to the house and then goes down to the Poffs' house. Staff analysis, with Franklin County being a prime vacation destination, um, this would help with the temporary lodging um, issues where guests can, and visit Franklin County and enjoy all the amenities and recreation that we have to offer. Obviously, as you saw from the one map, it is close to the town of Boone's Mill, so it will help them because there are restaurants and places that they can visit. Um, in addition, we do think this will drive up tourism and add to the economic value of the county. We do not think that this short-term rental would be substantially detriment to adjacent properties or change the zoning, uh, change the character of the zoning district. Um, the planning commission did hold their public hearing. There were no speakers against or for the project. It was a seven oh vote to approve with the five conditions. Basically, this will be the only short-term rental on the property. If there is any additional rentals that would come up in years to, to come, then they would have to come back through the process. The owner shall have to comply with the short-term rentals regulations in the county code, section twenty-five, one thirty-eight and section five point five seventy-two of the Franklin County Code. The owner shall have to give a proof of liability insurance of a million dollars. The owner shall have to register the short-term rental yearly and have it inspection, inspected. Actually, they have already registered their short-term rental and, um, which is not uncommon. Some people do that ahead of time. And they will have to, like I said, adhere to all the codes, um, requirements in the Franklin County Code. The um, SAP, the Safe Adequate and Proper from the Virginia Department of Health, the Poffs decided to go and get that ahead of schedule. That should have been at your um, place. And hopefully, you saw that. That was issued by the health department so that you know that their septic is okay. There was some issues that um, Ms. Huffman had and they decided to take care of it before they came to the Board of Supervisors. And I would be glad to answer any questions, and I do know that Ms. Poff probably would like to speak.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Cooper? Don't see any. Thank you. You say the owners are here?
Yes.
Will state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Rhonda Poff and I live in the Boone District. Mr. Chairman, thank you, and members of the board. Um, I would like to thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to speak here tonight and for the
and for the time and effort each one of you has put into reviewing our request for a special, uh, use permit.
Can't get a little closer to you, Mike?
I would also like to thank the planning commission, the clerks, secretaries, and even those who answered my calls. Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Rhonda Poff, I'm with, from the Boone District in case you didn't hear that earlier. You all have been very super, uh, super helpful in navigating my husband and me through this process. It has been a pleasure meeting and interacting with each one of you. I wanted to start with a short video of what we have named the Inn at Maggity Creek and then I have a short presentation. My parents moved to Franklin County, Boone's Mill, when I was twelve. I attended middle school and then went to Franklin County High School where I graduated. Moving from the city to Franklin County was quite a change for me. I have adapted very well and love the quiet country home that my husband Danny and I currently reside in. My husband Danny Poff is a true Franklin County native, born and bred here. His grandparents, William Blair Poff and Virgie Lee Poff, purchased the property, a hundred and twenty-six acres and the farmhouse in nineteen forty-nine. It's actually purchased in nineteen forty-nine, it was built, well, I'll tell you in just a minute, with forty-five hundred dollars cash in hand and they made loan payments on the total amount of ten thousand dollars. It was being auctioned be- because the former owners, the Rays, could no longer afford to keep up the farm and a twelve-room farmhouse. We were told that the aunts, when it sold, cried and the children of whom some are still living today could not understand why their aunts were so upset. As you can see in this ad, it was being sold with a pair of good mules. William Blair and Virgie's children were young when they moved to the farm and one of their boys took a great interest in the farm and continued the farming tradition. That is Thomas C. Poff, father to my husband Danny Poff. Because the house was so big and was advertised as three apartments, when they purchased it, they decided to rent it back to the home, to some of the Ray family and to the locals. Lordy, that is the only name the children knew him by, a World War II vet with PTSD, rented a room upstairs. The Poffs frequently rented a room to the apple pickers that came into town to work at the local orchards. Tommy Poff inherited the farm and most of the property upon his parents' death. Tommy and Helen Poff in the late nineteen nineties lovingly gifted my husband and me the back forty acres to build a house on. They both saw our interest in this special piece of property. Tommy died in twenty eighteen and Helen died in twenty twenty-two. Upon her death, we had a decision to make, what to do with this big house. We did not want to sell it as we have to drive by it every day going in and out of the driveway. We decided we wanted to rent it out for short-term use. We got to work on it and gave it a fresh coat of paint and took a few trees down that were leaning towards the house. We cleaned up inside and got rid of three to four extra big dumpsters of stuff that accumulated over the years. Being raised during, during and around the Great Depression, Tommy Poff did not throw away anything. One day during the renovations last summer, we were in one of the bedrooms adding an outlet and realized that there was something super hard behind the wall that even a drill was not going through. Upon closer examination, we found that under the walls of part of this house was a pre-Civil War log cabin. We were surprised, in fact, everyone in our family was surprised, the community was surprised. No one living today knew it was a log cabin inside. This is, this picture right here is definitely pre-construction. Um, it did not look like this when we first started. And this is just the log area that we have, have been lovingly restoring. We had so much fun restoring it and the best part of it is what we found behind the plaster and beater, beaded board, a secret room that had late eighteen hundreds clothing, Victorian lace shoes, children's toys, perfumes, corsets, and a full-size spinning wheel. There were lots more fun finds, it was like opening up a hundred and twenty-year-old time capsule. We plan on displaying these in the house. We have documentation that a home or a business, possibly the Boone's Mill Post Office, existed on this property in the year eighteen- About two hundred yards up behind the home is a cemetery. Each headstone is hand-carved and barely legible, but the latest date of death is eighteen forty-seven. While we've been renovating, many locals have come forward and supported our endeavors to restore this beautiful home. Many of the grandchildren, nieces and nephews of the Rays, as well as of the Poffs, have been our biggest fans, as well as many of our neighbors. Our rooms are respectively named after those who stayed in them. There's Virgie's room. There's Patty's room and Patty is the youngest of the Poff children that moved in in nineteen forty-nine and she's the last living of the original Poffs that moved in there. There's Lordy's room. And the apple picker's room. We've tried to leave the rooms the way they looked back when these folks lived there, including the paint, the original paint colors. With all this in mind, we think this will make a wonderful place where people can come and stay and enjoy the rich history that this property provides. There is easy access to our home off Boone's Mill Road onto our private drive, Poff Lane, with plenty of parking spaces to not encroach on our neighbors. We have, since the letter application in early March, purchased back the thirteen acres that were part of the original nineteen forty-nine purchase of a hundred and twenty-six acres. The thirteen acres were owned by Danny's cousin who wanted it to be back as part of the whole property. We will be very selective as to whom we allow to stay on our property. We really want to host those who appreciate the history of this property as well as of the county. We have a vested interest in it as we live right on the property. There will not be any, any parties of any kind allowed on our property. We keep our property clean and tidy and expect those who stay there to abide by our rules. Our neighbors that we have spoken to are in full agreement. We have at least ten letters of support from our neighbors and others in the Boone's Mill area. In closing, we hope you will agree with us that this will be a wonderful asset to our community and will generate healthy tourism in our very special area known as Franklin County. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Poff?
I just want to say, um, beautifully done. Having, uh, come out upon your invitation to view the property is lovely. It is so historic, uh, and it will be a wonderful place for visitors to come and learn more about Franklin County. So, uh, I appreciate you and your husband extending yourselves, um, to offer this up.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poff. Okay, this time we'll open the floor for public hearing on this matter. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up?
Mr. Chairman, I have no speakers for this item.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in regard to this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, board, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I find that there should be no, uh, substantial detriment to adjacent properties and that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby and such use will be in harmony with the uses permitted by right in the zoning district and with the public health, safety, and general welfare to the community. Therefore, I move to recommend approval of the applicant's request for a special use permit to allow for short-term tourist rental of the dwelling with the five conditions as recommended by the planning commission.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the special use permit. Any other comments before we take a final vote? I'll call Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundev is absent for the vote, Chairman Tatum?
Yes. All right, other matters for supervisors. Let me get her and then I'll come to you.
You get me, okay, okay, sure. Um, I just had a couple of quick things. Um, you all will recall, uh, at the last meeting, um, and Mr. Whitlow put in your packet a copy of the email from a citizen requesting, um, that we consider some relief in our fees relative to short-term rentals. Um, the first one was, um, just to pay a one-time registration fee of two hundred dollars and that that two hundred dollar fee would be waived as long as the property owner uh, or the host resides on the property within sight of the residence to ensure proper sup- uh, supervision. Uh, I know Mr. Whitlow reached out to staff, um, and, and Mr. Whitlow, I don't presuppose to, um, steal your thunder. I think, tell me if I'm incorrect, that the assertion was is that this model uh, for short-term rentals with a third-party vendor was built on a, um, a, a zero-sum game basically where the fees would, um, cover the cost of the compliance. You have, am I right about that?
That's correct, Ms. Smith. Um, uh, the, of course, the intent initially of the short-term rental registration was, uh, to assist with the third-party, um, vendor that we have, uh, to certainly help pay those fees uh, for compliance and then also the cost of the code compliance piece in terms of staff, uh, going out to make sure that the short-term rentals are safe and fire exits and so forth. I, I will defer, uh, Ms. Smith, members of the board, if there are, you know, you know, detailed questions and so forth, uh, Ms. Cooper and Mr. Sandy are both here and have both worked on that.
So I guess my question to, uh, my colleagues is, do you have any feedback on this? Is this something that you would like to entertain, send back to the planning commission, or what is your pleasure on this?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I mean, um, I think it's worth us looking into. And, um, yeah, Ms. Pendleton, uh, reached out to me as well on this matter and, um, I think she has a valid point, so.
Okay.
Explain to, explain to me again what's going on, please. They're asking, they're asking for the fee, I, I'm not, uh, aware of this.
Sure, um, they said that they agree with the two hundred dollar registration fee, uh, but they do not see the justification of that fee being an annual requirement. Um, at least in their situation, we live on the property, they're within sight of the rental property. So they were asking for, uh, some exemption to, uh, be considered. Number one was having registered with, um, Franklin County, paying a one-time registration fee of two hundred dollars versus it being annual, only predicated on the fact, um, that that is waived if the property owner, um, is living on said property or within sight, distance of the property.
It's my understanding though that that fee is to pay the vendor.
That's what we were just talking about, yeah, yes, sir.
What's happened when I was, when it sounds when I was off?
Um, yeah, you weren't here.
I want to hear then, the, the fee is to pay the vendor, so the, the vendor, it's a continuous fee.
Correct.
So, no, I don't want to change that.
What other fees are incurred by these people running these short-term rentals? The county, is there any other fees we incur upon them?
Sure, um, M- M- Mr. Carter, of course, there's the registration fee for the short-term rentals and then of course there's the transient occupancy that is collected by the commissioner of the revenues office, but those are the fees specifically. If there are additional fees, if you will, by, um, um, third-party, uh, vendors, meaning VRBO, Airbnb, certainly, they have their separate fees, obviously, for those organizations that help market short-term rentals. But in terms of money fees, there is that annual registration fee for short-term rental that, that does help us monitor and comply and so forth, make sure things are in compliance. Then there's any transient occupancy on top of that and of course, I'm always looking to, to Mr. Sandy and Ms. Cooper who certainly worked on this initially.
Speaking for myself as a business owner, that's a cost of doing business and two hundred bucks in the scheme of things, if they're leasing it twenty times a year, that's typically passed on to the consumer. Uh, I think we need to maintain that fee in order to, to pay our vendor, that's just where I'm at.
We've, we've got to pay our vendor, plus we have to furnish police, fire, and rescue and everything else. So that's, it's like you said, that's a, a good term to remember, that's the cost of doing business.
Well, and I bring this forward because a constituent asked me for board consideration. So, um, after getting the analysis from staff in our packet, um, I concur with what, what you all are saying. This is a cost that we agreed upon when we put this ordinance in place. Okay, is there, you want me to proceed?
Go ahead and proceed.
Okay, um, as I was stating earlier, I explained, uh, to you, my colleagues, uh, regarding some work I want to do with, um, our neighboring localities on, uh, secondary road program with VDOT, um, just to kind of gather a consortium together. Um, I would like to have one more of our board members work with me. Um, but I, I don't want to move forward with this if it's not at your pleasure as a board and if you don't feel like it's something that you could support, um, you know, I would certainly respect and honor that. Um, it's something I feel strongly about because as Mr. Daniels admitted, our funding's not moving in the right direction and all it's doing is continuing to hamper our ability to take care of our roads.
I'll su- support you in anything you want to do to fight for the county, but if you guys recall, my very first meeting as a board member, I made myself look like a dummy in front of everybody on this exact same matter because I thought then we weren't being treated fairly. But the next day, talking to Mr. Daniels, because he reached out to me, it's a formula they use based on mileage of unpaid roads. You do so much for this county, Ms. Smith. I don't want to see you take on something else that's not going to get you anything because I think you do more than you should now. I'm just, if you want to do it, I a hundred percent support you because I brought up the first meeting I was on the board and I even made some of the other board members mad on, you know, because, you know, I came down pretty hard on VDOT, but I don't, I don't think they're going to change.
Well, we've been cultivating, I think, a, a pretty good and strong relationship with our legislators in what it's going to take as a change at the general assembly level. So, I mean, simply put, we, we need a legislator to carry our request and my estimation was is if we could build some leveraging support with our other rural localities, that speaking with a more unified voice to a need may get more, more attention than just Franklin County saying we have a problem.
I support you a hundred percent. I just, I know how much you do for this county and I don't, I don't want to see you take on something else because I think you do more than, you do more than probably all of us combined sometimes on some of these things. But, yeah, I support you.
Thank you.
Hundred percent.
I think if, if we do this, if you're willing to take this on, you'll want to reach out from Franklin County going west because from looking at that map that he showed, especially Floyd and Patrick, uh, Carroll County, some of those counties, uh, what just west of us, uh, maybe if we get together as a group, four people, louder voice, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Exactly, I, I would feel like I wasn't doing my job, knowing that, you know, some of the issues that came out of the meeting I had recently with CTV chair. If we don't say something and, and make known that we're not happy with it, we can't expect anything to change. And I'm willing to put my, you know, roll my sleeves up and, and just let them know it's not okay and why. Um, and I'm happy to do that, I would be proud to do that. Um, I just, I would like to ask for your support in that and that you feel it's something meaningful that you could stand behind.
Absolutely.
Anybody over here have anything you want to share?
I agree with Lori and I would be willing to get in the car with you and drive to Richmond anytime you want to and I think it's going to take a coalition, not just you and I, but we're going to have to get some people- we're going to have to get some people from Floyd and Pulaski and Stewart and these far southwest Virginia counties to join up with us because it's, it's going to take numbers to get us more money here.
And Mr. Sandy has already provided me with some mapping and identification of the appropriate counties and
I'll see him again.
You know, maybe within the VACO footprint, you know, for our region, that kind of thing. Do I hear you volunteering to work with me on this?
Sure, yeah, I need, I need one more committee.
I took advantage of that, didn't I? Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Mr. Whitlow, this sounds like could be a, a good issue to be discussed at our VACO meeting in June?
Yes, and, 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 Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we, we've had some initial discussions regarding that very thing at our June fourteenth VACO meeting, I think this topic certainly is going to be shared by Region Ten and Region Eleven, as Ms. Smith noted.
Okay, and I just had one other thing, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, thank you, gentlemen, very much. The only other thing I wanted to inquire about, this is for Mr. Whitlow, is how are we doing with work on a funding formula with the schools?
Ms. Smith, what I will tell you is, we haven't had any further discussions other than the initial discussions on the funding formula.
Mm-hmm.
I know that is something that this board has, has talked about in terms of investigating. We are aware of, of course, funding formulas in other jurisdictions, Roanoke County, if you will, I believe, the city of Roanoke, we haven't had further detailed discussions with the superintendent or the finance director, they are aware, of course, that it's been mentioned and discussed, that, you know, this board would like more information on that. What I will tell you is, the new incoming superintendent, it's a good opportunity on staff agenda to sit down with the new superintendent and maybe from a staff level have those discussions and then perhaps bring back information to the board and potentially go from there, I, I know we had discussed earlier regarding a, a joint meeting of the school board and the Board of Supervisors, primarily with an update on the CTE, but perhaps there's also an opportunity to, at one of these meetings where there's a joint meeting, discuss, but beyond that, there hasn't been a lot of detailed work.
Well, and obviously, we have time, I just want to make sure that we are in front of, of the fall when staff starts working on budget.
Sure.
Funny, it seems that we're talking about that already, but that you'll have some direction from the board and from the school board as to what those desires are and options.
Sure, we will, if it's the pleasure of the board, consensus of the board, Ms. Smith, we'll continue that discussion with the, the school set, the staff, looking at Mr. Brian Carter, and certainly our next sit-down with the superintendent and Mr. Dave Terry will, will, will have those discussions and welcome the new superintendent as well.
Mr. Carter has a nasty grin on his face. I know, I'll hear about this later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Ronnie Thompson, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Smith, for taking on another challenge for this county, I admire you for all your hard work that you do for this county, as do all the other board members. I want to start by saying thank you to this board, what we've done for the public safety of this county, specifically the volunteer fire departments, I think, seeing that board with the fire trucks and apparatus and, and what we've done with increasing operating budget for our volunteer fire departments, getting a maintenance budget in there for our trucks, kudos to this board for, for everything that's happened in the last three and a half years, I know I'm coming off the board, but very, very proud of what you guys have done, so thank you very much. I want to talk about, we touched briefly on infrastructure across from the Business Park on two twenty earlier, it's your district, and I apologize for speaking on behalf of your district, but there's, there's plans for an urgent care out there and, you know, I would like to ask the board for us to, to look in, I mentioned this to, to Chris Whitlow and, about, I know there's sometimes, you know, there's incentives for businesses and stuff that we can help out with, and I would like for us to look into that, I think that's going to be a huge thing for that end of the county to have an urgent care out there, and it really stinks that we don't have sewer and water on that side of two twenty, but that doesn't mean that we can't put it in either, so, I would like for the board to, to look into that and see, was there a meeting yesterday, Mr. Whitlow, with said property owner?
Yes, Mr. Mitchell, yes, staff had a meeting and discussed that, that very thing with, that, that was the example I used earlier where, you know, there are properties along there that may not necessarily have the connectivity to, to sewer, public sewer, just because of the distance from that, and so they run up against issues like failing septic systems or inadequate septic systems, and so, as I noted, you know, the county is completing the study with the Water Authority to bring back what that may look like in terms of how do we make that connectivity happen for distribution, for, for public sewer connections with the Water Authority. We don't necessarily have a timeframe of when we'll expect that study back, but it is imminent, it is ongoing, and to, to your point, I think we very instructed from the county's capital improvement plan, discussions in terms of investments, because that is a key function, if you will, of government, is to provide that infrastructure for, to, for private enterprise, so, I'm rambling now, but there was a, a meeting yesterday and we, we do understand with businesses, you know, a lot of times, and some of those were mentioned this evening, you know, no fault of a business themselves, a lot of times the requirements, and not only county requirements, but VDOT requirements or VDH requirements, a lot of times can get in the way, if you will, of a very efficient connectivity to, to infrastructure, and so, how we as the county, how can we mitigate that, and so staff is aware is a good conversation yesterday that we had with, with that prospective business.
Okay.
I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, I, I, I think it would, you know, it might be just what's needed out there to, to draw in some more business and keep expanding business out the two twenty quarter towards Boone's Mill, so, and, and discussion earlier about the SROs, once again, very, very proud of this board and continuing moving forward and looking at how we're going to make it work, I know it's going to be expensive, but rest assured, the, the county's behind us on protecting our children from the evil that exists in this country today, and we have to keep moving forward on that because it is not getting any better out there, and I thank the board for allocating money to, to have the SROs in the schools to the end of school year, it meant a lot to me as a, as a husband and a, and a father, so, thank you guys for that as well, appreciate this board.
Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll give a brief report on the Ag Development Committee you all put me on, we met this week, and it's, it's a great committee, I'm learning all about some farming things on there, I didn't know, this board discussed concerning the county fair that we wanted more large animals there, so, they've sort of locked on to that, and they're talking about maybe a permanent facility at the rec park, like an exhibition barn, and I told them this would be a long-term project, things move very slowly in government, and it was going to require money.
You're making money, buddy.
That was good, that was good.
From my voice to God's ears.
The Lord's talking to us, right?
I know, I know, y'all.
We are going on a field trip to see the, the ODAC facility to get some ideas, and my associate supervisor, Nick Mitchell, suggested we go to Buckingham and look at their facility, it was more in line with probably what we could do, but it, it's real exciting, and they're forming another committee under their committee of other folks to, to give advice, and I think they're going to join us for the Farm Bureau Dinner also. A young lady from the high school that's a FFA teacher came, and she's very exciting and I invited them to come to the board, I knew they couldn't make this meeting, but I'd like for you all to hear what all they're doing in the high school program, it, it's amazing, I had no idea, welding fabrication, all, all sorts of things that would play into the career in technical school. And I just have one question for the folks at the Maggity Creek Inn, I have an old cabin up in the mountains, and when we remodeled it, we found snake skins everywhere, did you find any snake skins in that place?
No, but we found enforcement here, stuff in the walls.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's a great project, and congratulations, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Carter, I've just got to say, because we're all down here just getting a good laugh, that's, that's what you get for being absent.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
You pick up committee assignments.
And now you've sucked me into going to Richmond.
I now suck you into going to Richmond.
All right, Nick Mitchell, you have anything?
I just want to say that the, earlier, all those employees and their long tenures of service, that was really cool to have to scrunch them in to get a picture, and that's a rare thing, I'm happy to see them, and back in what Mike says, I would support that ag deal, a hundred percent, we need more of that, instead of worrying about always trying to find, put in more houses, maybe leave some of the fields empty so some of these kids can farm one day.
Right.
And while we're on a roll with the landfill, I think we need to go back to visiting these man sites where we can close that thing down and give them boys Sunday off, I think it'd save the county money and we need to be looking into that.
And holidays.
Holiday, of course, I hear them every Sunday morning, and, and it would save the county money and would help us retain employees.
I mean, they don't, I don't think they get Christmas off.
Three hundred and sixty-five days.
They have to work Thanksgiving and Christmas.
That's not good.
They need to be closed.
Absolutely.
But, we've got to, we've got to get the sites to where it's under, I think the county was on a good roll with that for a while, maybe it's kind of fallen back, we need to get that back rolling.
Thank you for bringing that up, Nick.
All right.
That's good.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the time set aside in our meeting for public comment, the public comment gives citizens an opportunity to address the board in person or in writing on matters appropriate to the responsibilities of the board, speakers must direct all comments to the board as a whole and not to individual board members or employees of the board or county, personal attacks or insulting or profane or vulgar language will not be tolerated, likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board and that are not a function of local government and over which we have no control are not acceptable, public comment is not a question-and-answer session and board members will not answer questions during the public comment, if a speaker violates these rules, the chair will rule the speaker out of order, and upon a second violation, have the speaker removed from the podium. Madam Clerk, will you call the first speaker, and I see we have Jessica O'Neill here.
Yes, Jessica O'Neill?
Hello, if you will state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Jessica O'Neill. Can I start? Okay, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jessica O'Neill, and I am proud to be a part of Franklin County community, I have been a part of this community for thirty-three years, in the last five years, I have been in the real estate industry, first and foremost, I want to commend the community for their efforts in supporting local organizations such as the recent seed program for fighter fighters, grants for the community college activities, I love to see the community come together and support each other during these times, however, today I would like to talk about the issues that affect many families in our community, the lack of affordable housing, the cost of housing has been rising at an alarming rate, and it is becoming increasingly difficult for low to moderate income families and individuals, we have already inquired land for development and, in the process of finishing our website to seek grant opportunities, I believe that housing is a fundamental human right, and it is our responsibility as a community to ensure that everyone have access to safe and affordable housing, I am here today to ask for your support in the form of a grant program to help organizations like mine, with your help, we can make a real difference in lives of many families in our community, thank you for your attention and your support, let us work together to make Franklin County a place where everyone can thrive and have a place to call home.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Are you okay? We called again. Kathy Cummins?
State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Kathy Cummins, I live at three, three five seven nine Kemp Ford Road in Union Hall, for the past two months, I have joined Glenn and Moore's campaign, "Do Justice to the History Experienced by African-Americans," but some progress is being made, and I need to bring up something different this evening, to her great credit, Supervisor Lori Smith has already brought this topic up, Franklin County needs to carefully review and update its antiquated zoning designations, and that's Ms. Smith's adjective, let me explain the harm a misguided zoning assignment from thirty-five years ago has done, in May of nineteen eighty-eight, a five-acre parcel of land on Smith Mountain Lake was zoned B2, general commercial, a married couple lived in a house on that property, the surrounding undeveloped land was zoned agricultural and residential, there was no public access to this particular piece of property, but only a private road belonging to the developers of the neighboring residential subdivision, Royal Estates, in nineteen eighty-seven, prior to the B2 zone assignment, an agreement was made with the couple who lived there that they would be permitted access to a new road, Royal Estates Boulevard, but that agreement never achieved legal easement status, Royal Estates Boulevard remains today a private, unmaintained road belonging to the residential subdivision, so why was a general commercial B2 designation made when there was no public road to access the site, the couple and the house created a small assisted living facility in September of nineteen eighty-eight, but Lakeview Manor, Home for Adults, was never recognized as a business according to the Commissioner of Revenue, Lakeview Manor was never any bigger than group homes listed today with Piedmont Community Services Board, which exist within residential R1 zoning, Lakeview Manor did not renew its license to operate after two thousand and three, so for the past twenty years, a neighborhood saw only a single-family home on the property, even though the driveway crossed the corner of someone else's lot, no one minded that the homeowner used the neighborhood's private road, but today, a developer is taking advantage of the B2 zoning and is building a motel and eleven canvas cabins on the property, consequently, to protect their property value and the neighborhood they enjoy, the residents are having to raise more than thirty thousand dollars to pay an attorney to take this matter to circuit court, I understand that there's nothing to be done now except have this settled in court, but I would ask that you please serve your constituents and make sure this doesn't happen to anyone else, thank you.
Ed Saunders?
State your name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, my name's Ed Saunders, I live at two forty-five Nature Stone Road in Farum, so, I want to talk to you guys tonight, I read through the Farum Parcel Master Plan because I really don't have a life, and one of the, there were a couple items of note that I wanted to bring up to you guys' attention, so, on page nineteen, the last paragraph, it states, "A housing gap analysis indicates that no individual housing segment by affordability and tenure, renter versus owner can support more than thirty-four units in Farum, consequently, the county should consider several approaches to developing the entire master plan site." Then on the second, or on the page twenty, it states, "Given the relatively large size of the subject site and the small number of units it can support, the housing assessment recommended that some portions of the site accommodate outdoor recreational space, these amenities may include large common space, walking and biking trails, a nature preserve, an outdoor performance venue, or public park, such uses would add to the appeal of both Farum and the site." So, with that being said, my wife and I have taken it upon ourselves to see how much support there is in Farum for a park, so, we have set up at the farmer's market for a couple weeks in a row, we've gotten over a hundred signatures of people supporting a park, some of the amenities include things like a dog park, a playground, a meeting pavilion, one of the issues that Farum Ford has had is we're pretty much having to beg, steal, and borrow a place to set up our shop, fortunately, the Farum faith has been kind enough to let us set up shop there for a while, obviously, with, with a lot of what surrounding areas have done, you know, places like Henry and stuff where they have raised the money to put in a park themselves, I think a lot of the constituents there in Farum also would be willing to raise I think a lot of the constituents there in Farum also would be willing to raise the money, be willing to devote the time. I've had a sixty-year-old lady say, "I'll bring my power tools." So, there's a lot of support for a community area in that as well. And I do agree with the young lady earlier, there's a desperate need for, uh, affordable housing in our area, especially with Farum being one of the poorer sides of the county. So, um, I do support housing, but I also support the, uh, the mixed-use property, something that gives us, uh, as folks in Farum, a place to go, a place to do things. Uh, Farum Ford has been working on ways to bring in and raise money to do more things for Farum and this might give us, uh, a spot to do that. So, um, hopefully you'll consider that, I'm working with some of the folks around the county to learn how other places have done it. So, with that being said, I just hope that you guys, uh, will let the folks of Farum raise it and possibly have a place for us to, to put the stuff we'd like. So, thank you so much for your time, hope you all have a great evening.
Rebecca Saunders?
State your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, my name's Rebecca Saunders, I live at two forty-five Nature Zone Road in Farum. Uh, I'd like to speak today about the eighty-four acre parcel in Farum. I strongly feel that this land has more value to the community than just how much tax revenue it can bring the county. It has been stated multiple times that there won't be any more money spent by the property, or by the county on this property. That means that any amenities for the community would have to be provided by a developer. And I don't know a single developer willing to spend money on a park or a community center or a playground, all things that our community have been begging to have because there's no financial benefit to the developer. So, if the county is not willing to provide it and the developer won't provide it because they can't make money from it, then any plan that is presented that includes a park or amenities aren't something that we can actually count on having. The feedback given by the community at the meeting in December looks nothing like the master plans that have been presented so far. Please talk to the people who live in Farum. The vast majority of our community does not want this much housing. We have asked for things to improve our community, not just more houses, that none of us that live there can actually afford. I have to ask why input was requested for, from the community if our wishes and concerns are not going to be listened to. This is taxpayer-owned land and the taxpayers deserve to have a say in how this land is utilized. Please don't say that you're listening to us and then just completely ignore us. We need affordable housing in Farum, specifically housing for our elderly population. I'm asking you not to be flexible with your requirements for this property. I'm asking you to say, for, to any interested developer, that this affordable elderly housing is what this community must have, nothing else. And if you, as the Board of Supervisors, aren't willing to place restrictions on the property in order to make that happen, then nothing proposed on the master plan will benefit the residents of Farum and that's truly a shame. I once again encourage each of you to take time to walk the trails along this property, uh, not just the sections near the road, but on back, uh, to see how varied and interesting land there is. From the heavily forested sections to the multiple spring-fed streams to the wetland meadows. Not only will it be clear just how beautiful land is, but also how destructive a large-scale housing development would be here. There are hills, gullies, streams and a myriad of issues for developers as far as leveling and rain runoff. It's apparent to anyone who sees the whole property just how well-suited this is for use as a park for the community and not just a large-scale housing development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Glenna Moore?
Good evening, Glenna Hawkins-Moore, Scenic River Drive, Snow Creek District. Please allow me to share the beginning of an outstanding story about two brothers born Franklin, born in Franklin County who enlisted in the United States Colored Troops to fight for the freedom of forty-four million enslaved people. That would be Private Herod Beverly and Private Samuel Beverly. Tonight, I will introduce you to their ancestors, Sylvester and Nancy Beverly, both free blacks. There was a big difference between being white and free in Virginia compared to being black and free. By law, free Negroes were required to go before the court to be registered and numbered. They were required to describe how they became emancipated, to point out identifying marks and scars on their bodies and to obtain new certificates of freedom every three years. Not having their certificates of freedom on them at all times could lead to disastrous consequences. In eighteen oh nine, Nancy Beverly is listed as number thirteen in a Franklin County Court order book. She is entered as a black woman, the wife of Sylvester, forty-three years old and of a low height, without any particular marks. The Franklin County Court accepted her claim to be free and ordered that she be registered and numbered. Her husband Sylvester Beverly is described as a black man aged sixty, without any remarkable scars and of low stature. Having satisfied the court of his freedom, the court ordered that he be registered number twelve. A book entitled, "Virginia Negro Soldiers in the Revolutionary War", shows Sylvester Beverly as a Franklin County revolutionary soldier who enlisted in seventeen seventy-six, First Virginia Regiment, and served until the end of the Revolutionary War in seventeen eighty-one. He fought in the battles of Stony Point, Yorktown and was one of the guards who escorted Cornwallis's captive army to confinement. Sylvester drew pay for his service. Documents show Sylvester Beverly as a well-to-do man in Franklin County, owning considerable personal property and a farm of a hundred and twenty-six acres on Chestnut Creek in Franklin County. Sylvester, Samuel and Herod Beverly were loyal American patriots on the sides of victory and freedom. Next month, I'll share more about Franklin County-born privates, Herod and Samuel Beverly, United States Colored Troops. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tabitha Collison?
State your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening, my name is Tabitha Collison and I live at three nine six Royal Estates Boulevard in Woods, Virginia. I would like to acknowledge support for Franklin County that there are needs to carefully review and update the antiquated zoning designations. I would like to bring ta- attention to a situation my community is facing. Royal Estates is dealing with misguided zoning from thirty-five years ago in our private R one community. Why was general commercial B two zoning designated with no public access? The Lakeview Home for Adults should have been zoned R one with special permit use because similar operations in the county were zoned as such. Now, thirty-five years later, a developer is taking advantage of this B two zoning and building a motel and twelve tent cabins on the property. Other than the B Z A, which has been very narrow course, it has left us with the only option to go to circuit court. Please serve constituents and make sure this doesn't happen somewhere else in our community. Other related, or unrelated topics is, I do support the affordable housing initiatives in our community and I would like to express my support for Ms. Glenna Moore's campaign and I am very grateful for the Student Resources Officers and, uh, thank you guys so much for giving me this opportunity to address the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have no other speakers.
Okay, is there anyone else that's present tonight that would like to speak to the board? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn and reconvene. Our next meeting will be June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, at one thirty. Thank you for coming out tonight, have a safe trip home.